Common announcement, individuals wishing to address the governing board are to complete a public participation form and provide it to the governing board executive assistant, Mrs. Goff, prior to the start of the board meeting. Thank you. To order, I would like to call to order the Apache Junction Unified School District's August 24th work session. We're going to begin with a roll call attendance. Ms. Garcia?
Present.
Ms. Conley?
Present.
Mr. Batters?
Present.
Mr. Concio?
Present.
And on present, all board members are in attendance. Mr. Concio, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. We're on to adoption of the agenda. Any discussion on the agenda? Now, would somebody like to make a motion on the agenda?
Madam President, I move we adopt the agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Would somebody like to second?
Second.
Mr. Batters seconds. Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Batters?
Yes.
Mr. Concio?
Yes.
An ayes, that motion passes five to zero. Onto current events. We'll take public comments. Mr. Ravelis? Mr. Ravelis, I'm just going to read the little announcement. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes so that everyone who wishes to speak will have the opportunity. Per ARS 38-431.02H prohibits the governing board from discussing items which are not on the agenda. If the item you're addressing is not on the agenda, the board will not be able to answer questions or discuss the issue with you. Thank you. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. My name's Roberto Ravelis, resident of Gold Canyon and longtime supporter of the mission of Apache Junction Unified School District. And I'm pleased to note that on your agenda, you will have a COVID update. And that is what brings me to the microphone today. As a grandfather, as a father, I am very concerned that this governing board take proper notice that a major, if not the most important obligation, as I said at the previous board meeting, is protection of the health and safety of the students, staff, and visitors to the campus. And in looking at the dashboard data of Pinellas County Health Department, I am shocked to see that Apache Junction Unified School District has the fourth highest number of cases of the 16 school districts in Pinellas County. But even more alarming is that Apache Junction Unified School District is experiencing the highest number of fatalities, deaths. And so I'm here to plead with you. Do not allow any political pressure determine that you should not take the strictest measures to protect the health of the students, including daring to go against the irrational mandate or executive determination by the governor that you may not mandate masking of students to help them preserve their life so that they can then go on to pursue liberty and happiness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ravelis. Okay, item three, information and discussion items. We are going to begin with item 3.1, Horizon Agreement. Dr. Lineberry?
Good afternoon. Can you guys hear me okay?
You guys okay?
Okay. All right. So, and can you go up to the top left where it says start slideshow? There you go. Up, on more, to the left. There we go. So, Madam President, ladies and gentlemen of the board, community members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here today. My name is Chris Lineberry and I am the principal at Apache Junction High School. I'm the principal at Apache Junction High School. And I would like to talk to you today about our project, Rise, what that is, and how that is going to help our students and how we're partnering with Horizon to assist us. So I have Meredith Doyle, the executive director, over at Horizon Health and Wellness with us today, and Stephanie Wilson, who's also here from Horizon Health and Wellness today, too. And they've got some bags to hand out to you guys before we're all said and done here. But I first wanted to explain what Project Rise is. Project Rise is really about restoration, individualization, service-oriented elevation. It's an approach to helping our students to be more successful. What we're looking at doing with this program is this is what our alt-school will become. So, our alternative program right now, in the past, since I've been here anyway, has been more of a place for kids to go that have been misbehaving. There's really been nothing that is being done there to help change the behavior. It's just a removal from the regular classroom environment into a different environment. So what I wanted to do was find a way to bring about that change. And Rise is the way that I would like to do that. So, there's a book called The Code of the West, or The Cowboy Ethics: What Wall Street Could Learn From Main Street of the Old West. And it's a code. It's an ethics program or a character program, but it's written in a way that I think speaks to rural kids. And can you hit the, that's a link, Code of the West is in green? Yes, ma'am? So it won't go to the internet. Okay. So, if you could see that video, it's very cool. I'll send it to you. The video is a listing of the code. And the code says things like finish what you start. When you make a promise, keep it. Some things aren't for sale. Know where to draw the line. They're all character traits that we use in character counts or variety of other programs, but it's written in a way that really does speak to the cowboy code. The author of the book, who, Cowboy Ethics, was watching the movie Open Range with Robert De Baal and Kevin Costner. And as he watched that movie, he developed what he thought was the Code of the West in rough draft form, and then dug further and ended up developing it. And it's become quite a successful movement. I can tell you that I have incorporated the Code of the West into my school in the past, and it worked very effectively. But what I want to do with Rise is instead of the alt-school seeming like a place of punishment, I want to change that mindset to make it a place of restoration, an opportunity for kids to experience restorative justice, and an opportunity for kids to make right the things that they've done wrong. So, a student would go to Project Rise if it's an alternative to a long-term suspension. This keeps kids in school. It definitely is a better way for us to be able to reach them. It keeps them in person. And it's going to help them in order to be able to be successful because they're going to be here, and they're not going to be somewhere else online. And again, it's an alternative to suspension. But there are a number of different parts of it. There's character education, service work, academics, mindfulness, and therapeutic intervention. The hope is that through our partnership with Horizon, there can be a therapeutic intervention that becomes a part of this plan. So, the first part, what we did was we leveled this into different levels. So, it's a behavior modification program. So, level one, I channeled it all after bull riding. Level one is called the shoot. So, when you're in level one, you have a lot of restrictions. And this is all on the website, which I can be happy to send you the link for if it's hard to read. But in level one, you're just starting out. So, in level one, they have to have perfect attendance for five days in a row. They have to make their daily points every day. They have to complete all of their work. They have to complete the orientation paperwork as part of that. After that first five days, they can then graduate or promote to the next level, which is level two, out of the gate. When they go out of the gate, this is an area where we start looking at student challenges as far as their own behavior goes, and helping them not only to take a deeper look at that, but also to take a look at how their actions impact others. So, in out of the gate, they have some requirements they have to meet. Out of the gate lasts for 10 days. And once they go through the out of the gate component, there are different benefits that they can earn, from being part of a store, a rising up store, that would be almost a PBIS kind of thing where they can earn rewards, to being able to not have to necessarily sit in, at their desk during lunch, which is what they would have to do during those first five days. Now they're able to go to a different area that's assigned by the teacher and interact with their friends. They can participate in the celebration Thursdays or Fridays. They can then move up to the next level, which is level three, the ride. In level three, they've kind of hit their stride. This level lasts for 15 days. While they're on this level, again, they've got a number of different limitations, and they have further rewards that they can earn. And what's happening each step along the way is kids are earning more opportunity to do things and to have more freedom while they complete more of the program. So, the idea is to get kids to a point where they can change their behavior and be integrated into the rest of the school community and get out of alternative school. The point of alternative school is to not have it. It's find a way to get kids out of it. The final level is called the purse. And I didn't bring one with me, but I have a belt buckle that I had made at my last school. It had the logo on it, Code of the West. It would say AJ Rise across the top of it with the gold AJ lettering. And it's something that the kids earn whenever they get out of the program. So, again, the idea is that along the way, they've done work to change their behavior. They've done work with, the hope is that they will be able to work with the counselors, and I'll get into that here in just a second, at Horizon, and start to address what the real issue is. I'll tell you a quick story. When I was at Stanfield, I had a family that had six boys. Three of those boys were age 18 and over, and three of those boys went to my school. And, well, three of those boys went to my school. One of them had just moved into the high school. The other two were in my school. And one of them was assigned to alternative school. On a December night, in the middle of the night, his brothers, who are all over 18, were riding their ATVs on the highway out by Stanfield. And a drunk driver hit them and killed two of them. That was on a Saturday night. On Monday morning, those boys came to school. They came to school because they knew that it was a place that they could go where we cared about them. They knew it was a place that they could go where they could get what they needed. And they came to school within 24 hours of that happening. Fast forward a year later, the brother who didn't get killed that night is riding his four-wheeler on the road and runs it into the side of a truck. And the mother calls the school screaming and crying, "He's dead. My baby's dead. My baby's dead." And then asks me to go to the crash site with her to help her to identify the body because the father wasn't able to be there. That was on Valentine's Day. The next day, those kids came to school. They came to school because they knew that we cared about them. They knew that they had a place to go, and they knew that we had the skill set to give them what they need. In our district, we have an overly, we have an overpopulation of sped identified students. My perspective on that is that many of those are children who have been through trauma. And trauma oftentimes manifests as these kinds of behaviors with focused difficulty, with the difficulty in engaging in controversy, maybe being defiant, et cetera. So, my hope is that many of our kids who have these kinds of issues will be able to participate in this program. It can last 45 days, or it can last a whole lot longer than that. The student has to work their way out of it. So, the quickest they can go through it is 45 days. That's a 45-day assignment to the alternative school. After those 45 days, it may be that, say they're three weeks into it, and they make a decision that causes them to be dropped a level, or causes them to go back to day one in that level. It can be, it can take longer than those 45 days. But the point is help kids to change their behavior so that they can be successful whenever they get out. And they can not only be successful, but they can be different, different in how they navigate the environment of school. And they can be more successful when they do that. So, Horizon Health and Wellness has agreed to partner with us. I'll let, I'll let them tell you a bit about their organization. But within this organization, they can provide one-on-one counseling. They can provide group counseling, and they can provide behavior coaching. Some of those groups we've talked about have been trauma groups. They have been kids who are having, experiencing problems with conflict, where they're fighting. There are a variety of different groups that kids can get involved with. The first question I asked when they first approached me was, "How do we pay for this?" Because there's got to be money involved. There's a law, House bill, or state bill, Senate bill 1523, called Jake's Law. And what Jake's Law puts in place is a number of different resources for kids to get help with mental health issues, and they cannot be denied. And I believe Horizon goes through Mercy Care? All of them. So, they can, they can provide that for all of our students at no cost. Obviously, there would have to be parental permission and some interaction with Horizon and our students and parents. But when I, when I talk with them, one of the things that I felt was really important was I did not want kids or parents to ever be concerned that what they talk about with a therapist or in a group would ever be something that was shared with school staff or anybody else. It's about getting kids services so that we can help them to be more successful. We have students who have been through horrific trauma and experiences. I had a student in my office just last week who, we were talking about an incident of somebody using drugs. And his response to me was, "If I catch him, I'm going to take care of it." And I said, "Well, let's, let's just hit the brakes for a second here and let me, let me learn a little bit more about this." And he said, "Well, so-and-so died in my arms, and I don't want anybody else to have that happen to them." So, our kids have experienced a lot. They need a resource and they need help. And this is an opportunity for us to be able to help them without, one, changing what we're doing. I think it's really important, I know that we are an educational institution, and that is our mission. I also think that our purpose is to provide kids with the tools to help them create better lives for themselves. And this is absolutely a way for us to address the need of the whole child and for us to move our, I believe, to move our school in a very positive direction. Would you like to come up and share any information, ladies?
So, I have some bags. And in the bag, there's some flyers for you guys. And I'll just explain. My name's Meredith. I'm the director of Apache Junction Operations. I've been with Horizon about five years now. Chris and I connected in the Stand Up AJ, which is a, at first, it was a youth coalition that was formed about two years ago, kind of before COVID took over our lives. And that's where we connected on the things that we can possibly do for the community and for the students here. So, again, the thing that Chris said, the first thing that came up was, "How would we pay for this and what could we possibly do?" So, Access has some funding called the Children's Behavioral Health Service Fund, Jake's Law. And they put into And they put into this, this is kind of like a bucket of money that any student that's uninsured or wouldn't qualify for Access or any other kind of insurance, we could tap into. So any student that is referred by a school can receive behavioral health services. So this goes through, the end of this school year, it was just extended. I think it started a couple of years ago. So hopefully, they'll extend it for next school year as well. So then Chris and I had been talking about the Rise program and what we could do. And so for starting off, we were thinking, we'll have to complete an intake, which would require parent, guardian, or legal guardian consent and things like that, sign all the treatment forms. But then we could provide an in-school, couple of hours a week, curriculum-based, evidence-based, trauma-focused programming to the students who opt in for that. And then we could do as medically necessary any other services. So if we felt like that child really needed some individual trauma therapy, we would then talk to the legal guardians about referring them to one of our therapists for maybe individual therapy. Or if we thought the parents needed the legal guardians, we also offer parenting classes based on the Love and Logic curriculum. And we can even do like a one day in school. It's an eight-hour curriculum, so that can be broken up, two, four-hour classes for parents. We provide medical services as well. So, you know, if the family's in need of any kind of medical care, we have primary care physicians. We just purchased a pediatric office up in North Phoenix, actually, to expand our pediatrics. Do you have any questions?
I don't know, I'm wrapping up. There's a lot of information.
If you want to say anything?
Right, guys? I mean, this is, I, I don't know, I'm not going to say anything yet, but I'll go down the line if anybody has questions, Ms. Conley. Do you have any questions or comments?
What, what's, what's in place right? I don't have, I have more of a question for Dr. Lineberry. What is in place now?
What's in place right now is our-
Yeah, like where, when they, when a student goes there, what happens?
Yes, ma'am. So when a student goes to the alternative school now, they go down and there are some, there's some semblance of the levels in place. We're in the process of implementation, and this takes time. In addition to the, now the online students being down there as well as some of our, our But they're not getting, so I'm a firm believer that we don't have a alcohol problem, a drug problem, or whatever issue it is we have in our country. I think what we have is a coping problem, and we have people using alcohol or drugs as a solution to that problem. I think for many of our students, they're seeking a solution. The one that they know is not necessarily the one that's the best for them. So when they go down there now, they're there all day, they're with Mr. Brennan until one o'clock, and then Mr. Swanson takes over, and they're there doing their work online. And typically, it's for a semester, and when the semester is over, then they come back into the school environment. But there's nothing to really help them change behavior during that time.
Nothing to work for like this?
Right. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Patterson?
So I just have a lot of comments about this. Anyone who knows me knows that I'm a huge mental health advocate. That's one of my main priorities. I'm just really glad that we're implementing this program because I feel like in K-12 for so long, behavior was just focused on more about the punishment, and that does nothing to get to the root of the issue. So I'm really glad that we're focusing on that now. And I think you brought it up earlier, a trauma-based approach is so important in this situation because you have to, you have to understand the root of the trauma that's causing that behavior issue. So I'm really happy about that. And then as for the partnership with Horizon, that also excites me as well. Yeah, oh, sorry.
You got to put it right up to your mouth.
I don't think it's on. But the partnership with Horizon, I think, is so important, bringing in that therapeutic aspect. So will these services also be available to the general population of students or is it just a behavioral thing?
Yeah, we treat all ages and stages of life, so it's the same. As far as insurance goes, I mean, we have other funding. So for example, if an uninsured legal guardian or parent comes in who has a substance use diagnosis and they don't have any other insurance, we have funding like this one that we could tap into. We also have benefit specialists and things like that to help people get through navigating that. So yeah, we accept all the access plans and most major insurances.
Okay. So-
Right.
Oh, okay.
But for the general pop, there's still other types of funding that we, we could have, so.
So if a student comes to a counselor and says, "I am severely depressed, I need counseling," do we to be able to provide that then?
Yes.
Let me, let me answer that real quick because she's, she, I think what she was going to say is yes. But the, the immediate answer is anytime that that happens where a student has self-harm issues, et cetera, we immediately call for the crisis team and the parent and allow them to make a decision, the crisis team, about what they're going to do next. That may be hospitalization, it may be other things, it may involve us calling fire and ambulance at that moment. But Horizon could certainly be a follow-up organization that they could go to for additional help.
Yeah, well, and we're going to have a bigger presence at this school. So we're going to have a bigger, this is going to mean we're going to have a bigger presence at this school. And so we can't always guarantee that we'll have a counselor here when someone comes in struggling, and we'll need to get parents' involvement regardless. But I think that that's just a benefit and a bonus. I'm not sure that the, the particular Rise program that we're talking about right now is necessarily going to apply for all of the kids depending on the issue. That may be more appropriate for an individual counselor.
All right, okay. Well, I mean, I just want to say again, bringing the counseling services on campus is just so important. That is literally going to save lives. So I'm just really, really excited about this. So, thank you.
So just trying to kind of give you a little overview of the treatment piece. So the program that we're going to be using has elements of motivational interviewing, if you're familiar with that. That is for, that is a type of interviewing that you use in counseling for people that are reluctant to admit that they have a problem or they don't feel they have a problem. And it's all focused on eliciting and bringing out their own motivation for change. And so there's a piece of that. And then there's also an evidence-based therapy that we're going to be using is acceptance and commitment therapy, which is focused not just on how do we cope with life stressors, but also what are your values, what do you want out of life? So it's a little, little bit of both, like how do you cope with the hard times and what do you want for yourself and how do you work towards that?
Ms. Garcia, you want to go next?
I have a couple things. So this is kind of my opportunity after a couple of years of meeting Dr. Lineberry. When Dr. Lineberry first got hired, I had an opportunity to talk with him, and I knew from the minute I met with him that he was going to bring something like this to us eventually because he was that type of person that not was, not only was coming to be a principal, but he can connect with these kids. And as a parent here at the high school, he has done that. I, I know that he's been dealing with a lot because I've had parents reach out to me. And he has done a phenomenal job reaching out to these kids. You know, we talk about academics, we talked about all these things that need to be done, but we need a principal that understands these children because he's going to save lives. And he has taken time after time to sit down and recognize the issues. And so I'm so grateful for this presentation to be brought to us today, for one. We have a lot of great principals, but I think it's important at the high school to understand the kids and understand that, you know, sometimes when they leave the house, it's not so great. And to have a principal be able to sit down and talk with the children and understand that they're going through some things and have this program on top of that is going to be huge because we need something like this. We need to be able to save lives for our kids. And there's a lot of kids that might appear that they're not struggling, but they are. And I want to thank Dr. Lineberry because I know that you have taken the time for several kids this past however many years in taking the time to understand what they're going through and really recognizing the issue and trying to fix it. So thank you very much.
Ms. Garcia, you have any other questions for Horizon?
I, I don't. I know a couple of years ago, we had, I think it was maybe five years ago, there were times that we called you in. I experienced it myself with my nephew, and you guys did amazing, amazing things for him. So this is kind of, you know, touching home personally. But thank you for the program and thank you for, you know, what you guys do.
Thank you, that's nice to hear. I was going to say, if you've looked up, if you've ever heard of the ACEs Childhood Study, it stands for adverse childhood experiences. And so basically, children that experience one of these ten, ten things during childhood, such as abuse, neglect, substance use, witnessing of anything, some kind of exploitation, anything like that, are far more likely to engage in substances and use substances as a coping mechanism throughout their life unless, you know, they seek treatment, early intervention is everything. So I'm really excited about this also.
Mr. Concho, do you have any questions?
I was just looking over this memorandum of, memorandum of understanding, so we're not making a decision on this, but this would be something we'd be taking action on at the next regular board meeting. Right, okay. I don't have any questions for anybody.
Okay, so I have a lot of thoughts going on. So I love the fact that we're finally looking at kids that are going down the wrong road, trying to divert them back on the right track. So that's always been my thing. And the only questions that I have is with the, this new program that you're putting in, the connection to Horizon, how is that going to look? Like, so is there going to be, I just want to kind of like understand how we're going to do this. Like, is there a level of kids that are going to be screened? Or give me an idea of how this is going to, the steps are. So like, we're going to start here, and then this is where Horizon would come in and like the process?
So let me give you an example. So let's say that we have student X, and student X, we catch student X with a THC vape. Student X receives their disciplinary consequence, we talk to them about the fact that the next time, it could be more severe, it could be up to ten days, it could be transference to alternative school, we talk to that kid about why they're doing what they're doing, et cetera. So student X comes back and we catch him again.
So when you say come back, are they suspended at that point?
They would be suspended at that point for possession of THC.
Not go to the alternative?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
No, ma'am.
So go ahead.
So then we bring them back, they go back to classes, we've talked with them about the issue of using the THC vape. They go back to classes and then we catch them a second time. Now, at this point, a ten-day suspension is what is called for. Typically, this would be a kid that we would probably take to a hearing. Or we would send this student and say they had to go to the alternative school. The idea here being, this student could then be sent to the alternative school as a, as a alternative to suspension. At that point, the alternative school does their intake. We have the meeting with the parents and with the student, we explain to them the process. And the process is exactly what I've just said. I go through the, you know, the whole presentation I just showed you about the alternative school. We talk about the opportunities for them to get help dealing with the situations that they're dealing with. And then we come to an agreement with the parents, we contact Horizon. Horizon will then do their own intake. And at that point, we'll have a schedule set up of when they're going to come for individual, when they're going to come for group, the potential for a behavior coach. All those different things will be scheduled out. But they'll have their intake with Horizon separate from us. And then they'll get the help that they need. And you know, when it comes to academics, I know how important that is. It's extremely important. And if you look at the, you know, Maslow's hierarchy of needs, those are also important. Blooms is what we use in education, and Maslow's is what you would use in psychology. The base of the pyramid in Maslow's is food, shelter, et cetera. The peak is self-efficacy. Well, we're never going to get to the peak of Blooms, which is synthesis, analysis, and creation, if we don't deal with the very basics of Maslow's. And that's what this is designed to start doing.
I agree. I do agree that we need to treat the whole child. And there are, I mean, I think we can all know some of the situations that we've had here in Apache Junction, and I think it's something that has been long overdue. We do need this kind of a program. So that's just my opinion. And I'm, I'm grateful for all the work that you've done to put this together. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Wallace, do you have anything you would like to add about it? No, not at this time? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, so much. And if anybody asks questions, we can just maybe just email if you think about something and want to get it answered before the next meeting. Item three point two, camera for school safety, Ms. Jackson?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to talk about our situation with cameras. Currently, we don't have a good way to keep an eye on any of the campuses. There's no cameras put in place, so you can't keep a real-time eye on what's going on day or night. There's no cameras. I'm sorry. Mask, it's a hurt. Currently, you can't see what's going on at the schools because there's not a real-time eye on the entire campus throughout the day or night. We currently have no way to provide footage if there's an incident that occurs at the school. Ideally, you would need cameras in place at your entrances, exits, and also your off-limit locations. And cameras usually help with deterring some of the malicious activities that take place at campuses around the, the schools. And what I'm going to propose is there's different cameras for each site, and there's a layout for them. So Edna, you could bring that up each. This right here is a map of Cactus Canyon. And as you can see, there's, there's cameras pointing in lots of different directions for where would they would be placed. The red ones are multi-directional cameras. The blue ones are like point cameras that are inside of the buildings. Or I'm sorry, the purple are inside the buildings, the blue are external. The yellow cameras, or the green cameras are fisheye cameras, and that would be inside by the admin sites, which can also record audio. So this is kind of the layout of what they would put in at Cactus Canyon for the coverage of the camera and the campus. We can also, before we finish or we actually put this in place, we can kind of go over with the company. If we want to change where the cameras go, we can kind of adjust that before they're actually put in place. This is just kind of a map that they laid out of what they felt would cover most of the campus. Is there any questions on Cactus Canyon as far as placement of cameras or the coverages that would happen there?
These cameras would be going all day?
Yes, and night.
And night.
Correct, correct. And then what happens is it, it holds thirty days worth of footage, so we can go back thirty days on the cameras to see if there was an incident. You can also see the cameras online to see some of the footages and bring it back. So this is kind of the layout of what was proposed for Cactus Canyon, for the cameras to be put in place.
So Renee, real quick, so when you say proposed by like an expert, like we're-
Yes, actually, we've had three different companies come in. They've walked the campuses. They've looked at where the pain points, we've mentioned to them some of the pain points of, you know, things that have been going on at the campuses. So they've walked the campus and they've determined where they think the cameras should go. They put these in many different school districts. So there's been three different quotes that I've received. We've had them all walk the campus and figure out, you know, proposing where they should go. And I think there's another one, Edna, for the high school that's more detailed. And I think there's another one, Edna, for the high school that's more detailed. Okay, uh, yes. This one is the, um, high school campus and it kind of, um, the same thing. There's multi-directional cameras. There's also cameras in, inside of the, the buildings. There's also a fisheye camera that would go at the admin part of the building that could do, um, audio also. Um, there's also, if you could see at the top, there's coverage on the football field that they would cover also. But there's probably, let's see, 47 cameras that's proposed to go in, uh, the high school. Any questions about the high school and, and cameras at that site?
Um, just, just, uh, one last question. This would be coming out of the ESRS money, is that correct?
Yes, correct. Yes, it would come out of the ESRS money. Then we also, um, had them look at the bus barn or the transportation and maintenance area. And they're proposing cameras there. And, um, there's approximately nine cameras that would cover that area. They kind of put the, the one that has the yellow on the left-hand side that's pointing out, that's where buses, uh, could return. And then people come in at night or should not come in at night. But, um, that was placed there too. So like I said, we can kinda adjust some of this, but this is the proposal that they came up with. And then the last one is the district office. And, uh, there was three cameras for the district office, um, and then also a fisheye one at the front reception area to cover any visitors that come in, um, if there's anything that needs to be recorded, would be right there also. The one camera that's, um, in the middle would get moved over, uh, nope, down, Edna. The one by the trees, that one would get, nope, the other one down. Yep. That will get moved over to the corner of the technology building because we have, um, doors over there and we'd like to catch that part of the building just because we have equipment and things in there. And so what they're proposing is, uh, these cameras here, there would be 30-day retention, um, that could be pulled up. There could be alerting turned on. The only issue with alerting at night is, I don't know if you've had cameras in your house, but sometimes you get alerted for trees blowing, things like that. So you have to be careful if we're doing that. But the cameras would be on. Um, we could, uh, see them online. We can, um, give permission to certain people to see the cameras. Um, if we need to pull footage, we could pull footage if there was a malicious activity that was spotted. And like I said, it will hold 30 days' worth of, um, coverage. If we need to add more cameras, we can expand out the system. The only problem when you expand out, it cuts into the amount of, um, retention on your storage, so you might have to increase your storage. Any questions as it comes to cameras?
There's like a warranty that comes with it and like the company will come out if any of them are?
Yes.
How long is that?
I think it's five years, but I will double check and get back with you on that.
Okay.
Mr. Bowers?
Uh, no questions. Just, I think this is also something that's been long overdue. So, uh, very happy about this too.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Ms. Garcia? Anything you have for Ms. Jackson?
I was trying to see is the, the amount we don't, do we have the?
Yeah, that was on the very top of the, it's a hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
Okay. And that's gonna be ESRS money?
Yeah, that's coming out of ESRS too.
Thank you.
Correct.
Mr. Concho?
Okay, let's assume we have a situation going on and we have cameras filming. Does this automatically alert the police department or what happens?
No, it does not. It does not automatically alert them. We would have to alert them. It does not. Because if, if you have, like I said with the, um, alerting on, if something happens, like, just like if you had a, uh, camera system at home, every time a tree blows, you get an alert every time, you know? So it's kind of, if you have malicious activity and you spot it and know it, you can go back in the footage and see it and then give it to the police department.
Okay, so if something's going down immediately, it can be caught on film, but then it depends who is going to be monitoring this?
I would think, and I don't know that would, um, um, I think it's the resource officer, but I don't know that for, for a fact.
That'd be another question.
Yes, that would be a other question, exactly.
Ms. Wallace, do you?
Okay, so in other words, we have this security camera system. We have malicious activity at midnight.
Well, the alerts, there's gonna be, there's, I don't know that we're gonna have 24-hour watch on the cameras. But right now, a part, big part of what happens is kids, people, who knows, are coming in at night and doing silly things. Like, it's easy to get into the TLC area right now. So they come in and they turn the toys over and they write nasty things on the chalkboard that's outside and do those things.
I understand.
But now we would be able to pull the camera footage and be able to see who those kids are.
I understand the, the silly stuff. What I'm concerned about is somebody going down to transportation that's got a grudge against the school district because he didn't, you know, he got pulled or he, he's been suspended or whatever and decides, well, he's gonna get back to the school district, he's gonna throw a Molotov cocktail at all those buses there that we just got. Buses are going up in flames, cameras are recording it. Who's responding? Who's monitoring this?
Well, Mr. Hills, the director of facilities, he would have access to the cameras. The principal at Cactus, the director of transportation, wherever the cameras are, whoever the administration team is there would be watching and checking things. I would have the cabinet at, at the district office. There'd be multiple eyes watching at different times.
Do we currently have a school resource officer?
We do have one on loan from the police department that comes and goes as the police department can allow. We have, um, those as part of the budget for ESRS.
I see. I need to get those guys hired right away. Okay.
We have security on campus, though, is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Two at the high school.
Right. So I think Mr. Concho kinda asked my questions, was the monitoring and the alerting. So if something happens at midnight, is Mr. Hill gonna get a call? You know, like, things like that. So I think...
You've got a partial solution is what I'm saying.
Yeah, unfortunately, if you turn the alerting on and it, you know, it can alert at everything 'cause, you know, tiny little things could trigger stuff, so you have to kinda tweak it. But, um, my concern is how much it's gonna alert somebody. And then if somebody's sleeping, you know, I mean, there's not somebody 24 hours looking at cameras.
So it's not like an alarm. It's a, just to go back?
A deterrent.
Right. Yeah.
It's a deterrent.
The other thing is, is, um, like with your home alarm, you pay your yearly whatever fee, but if it goes off too many times, they will start finding you, so I don't know.
But unfortunately, this isn't an alarm system. It's more of a camera system.
More of a camera, right.
Correct.
And, and just to be clear, are, a lot of the reason for the cameras is to catch more of what goes on during the school day, not things that you may typically think of happening. We don't have a lot of break-ins during the school year. We don't have a lot of vandalism. What, what this is gonna deter our hope is catching kids doing things that we can't always have people catching. You know, somebody everywhere. Now somebody, the security officers can keep an eye on things during the school day.
It would give them better eyes on the whole campus. They can't, like, if they're in one part of the campus, they can't see what's going on, you know, all the way across the other side of the campus. So this way, it'd give them a better eyes on the whole campus.
And I have to believe that deterrent is the fact that there's cameras. So you're not gonna throw the bomb when you know the camera's gonna record you throwing the bomb. You might be more li- likely to throw the bomb when you realize there's nothing down there and nobody to say who did it. So...
Do we have to say bomb?
It's not a bomb, but close enough.
I didn't wanna say the other thing and say the wrong word, so I went with bomb.
They're gonna throw Molotov cocktail unless it's at midnight.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Jackson?
No, I'm sorry. I'm having to look at things from a security standpoint.
No, I know you are. I know.
Understandably, Mr. Concho. Um, okay, and as well, if anybody asks questions from now until the next meeting, we can reach out to you. Thank you so much.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, item 3.3, purchase of staff computer. Ms. Jackson, you gonna continue on?
Sure. Um, every year, we have to go through, um, we look at our budget and we look at, um, the devices and where they fall in a refresh cycle. And, um, this year, we have about 40 laptops that are due for a refresh. Our refresh cycle's like every five years. Right now, like I said, we, we look at our budget. We look at what's, what's, um, five years older, o- older and we kinda budget for it every year to figure out what needs to be replaced. So these 40 laptops are the ones that need to be replaced on that refresh cycle. And it, it's the laptops for staff. And what ends up happening after five years, you can imagine the battery doesn't work all that great. Um, peripherals don't work like they used to. There's different peripherals that you need to use to connect devices. So, um, that's what we're proposing is to replace out 40 of the laptops. This would be coming out of the technology budget. It was already planned for during the refresh cycle.
Any questions? Ms. Conley?
No questions.
Mr. Bowers? Ms. Garcia? Mr. Concho, any questions?
Fifty-nine thousand dollars for 40.
Yeah, what that is, is also we added on a three-year plan for accidental, um, droppage and, and things like that. So if there's a problem with it, we can ship it back to Lenovo to have them fix it. What we have right now is if, if we didn't have that insurance, I think that's like a hundred and fifty dollars per machine to add that. But if somebody drops it, their screen breaks or whatever and we can't repair it, that, that's a, a large amount of money that you're throwing down the drain.
Well, Lenovo's like fifteen hundred.
And like I said, you already budgeted for this.
Yes, correct.
And this was budgeted? Oh, okay.
Yes, this was already budgeted. I, I look at the budget every year and I look at, uh, what needs to be refreshed.
Now, this is 40 computers. Are we anticipating the same amount for next year or what?
Yes. That, um, I don't know if you, um, remember, but in the technology plan, there was the, um, financials on the back and on that was the refresh cycle for staff and students. And it, it's a recurring cost just about every year to replace out, just to keep up with every five years.
Okay.
That's not the total amount though, what we have, right?
No, we have, uh, over four hundred, three hundred and fifty, four hundred.
So this is just swap?
Yeah, we're, yeah, renewing. We, we bring in the old ones, replace them out. So to stay on that cycle, you have to buy almost 40 per year.
Makes sense. Any other questions? Ms. Wallace, do you have anything to add? No? Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Okay, item 3.4, employee life insurance benefit. Mr. Crawford?
Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Wallace. I was asked to put together a few quotes for different options for life insurance coverage for us to discuss. I'll start with what we currently offer. We currently offer a fifty thousand dollar payout to the employee with no cost to the employee, and that is a thirteen thousand, six hundred, forty-five dollar district premium. I would like to add, um, with the pamphlet that is attached, that shows what we currently offer as well. And there are different options depending on your salary, um, of, and how much coverage you want to buy into in increments of ten thousand. Um, so if you'll have, I, let me just give you an example here. That first box for benefits, you can choose ten thousand, up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional coverage. And that is if you are, let me see. Uh, that is for, uh, employees who are making less than fifty thousand dollars annually. If you're making more than fifty thousand dollars annually, you can see, uh, there's also other options there for you. And as we have talked about in previous meetings, what we currently offer, um, it's 50%. Once you reach the age of 70 or above, you get a 50%. So it would be twenty-five thousand dollars at that point. And I just wanted to portray that we have the option of buying more if the employee wants to. Uh, just to give you an idea, back on that front page, an employee recently, I think this was last year, that purchased three hundred thousand dollars extra. There is, so there is, let me step back one second there. If you do choose, choose more than fifty thousand dollars, regardless of what the district is offering, offering, if any employee under any, any district, it's considered a fringe benefit if you get a, a plan that's more than fifty thousand dollars. So there is an additional cost to the employee. There is an additional cost to the district too, depending on how we structure it, but the employee then has to pay a, an additional cost because it's considered a fringe benefit. So to give you a context of that, we had an employee last year paying it for an, oh, up to three hundred thousand dollar policy. And that employee paid eight hundred dollars out of pocket for them to, to get that policy. Now, it's not, I, I can't give you flat numbers because it's dependent on age. So, um, there is a, a large table and they pick, they decide exactly what your, uh, fees will be, but anything over fifty thousand dollars is considered a fringe benefit. So when looking at the alternative options we could offer, starting, continuing with the same idea of a flat rate for all employees, that seventy-five thousand dollars I'm showing, which would be an extra five thousand dollars for the district, but also an additional, where we would be basically forcing the employees to pay, um, for their fringe benefit because it's over fifty thousand dollars. So if we said everyone gets a seventy-five thousand dollar buyout and that's over fifty thousand dollars, they would have an out-of-pocket cost because of it being over fifty thousand dollars. So that's the federal number for, to beyond that number, it's considered a fringe benefit. So, uh, it's not just the district cost. It would also be on the employee sum too. But again, I can't give you exact numbers just 'cause there's the variable of age, but you can refer back to that. Buying up to the three hundred thousand dollar policy was eight hundred dollars annually for that employee. So obviously, it wouldn't be as drastic with a twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand dollar increase, but there would be an additional cost to the employee. Same thing with the hundred thousand. If we offered that as a flat rate, uh, it'd about, almost double what the district pays, uh, going up to twenty-four, almost twenty-five thousand, um, for the district cost. But again, the employee would have an additional cost out of their pocket as well. We also asked about, uh, there, some districts offer, uh, payout of, dependent on earnings, dependent on salary. So that's, that was why it kinda took a long time to get back to you because they were looking, that's, that's a lot more math, um, trying to figure out everyone's salaries. So, uh, if we did a one-time pot, the same amount of a buyout as a annual salary, uh, now, I have that footnote down there. If someone's making under fifty thousand dollars, it would be a minimum of fifty thousand dollars still. So that would stay. If you make twenty-five thousand dollars with us, you'd still get the fifty thousand dollar, uh, buyout, but, or payout, I should say. But if you're making more, if you're making seventy-five thousand dollars, you would then make, get a seventy-five thousand dollar, uh, life insurance. If you're making a hundred, it would be a hundred. And figuring out all of those different levels, our district premium you see would be pretty close to what it is now with thirteen thousand, six hundred, twenty-five, twenty-dollar difference. But again, anyone over that fifty thousand would be paying their fringe benefit out of their pocket because it's, that, anyone making beyond that would then, if you make fifty-two thousand, you'd get a fifty-two thousand dollar policy and they'd have that fringe benefit because they're over that fifty thousand dollar limit. And same thing with the two times earning. Earnings, that would be double your salary. Uh, same minimum would be there with fifty thousand, but, um, you can see the district cost there would be twenty-two thousand. But again, additional cost for the employee. So, um, that was what I, I, that was, those were the numbers they came back to us with from Valley Schools through Sun Life. And I'm happy to answer any questions best I can.
Okay, I know I have a few. Ms. Conley, do you wanna start?
So right now, we offer 50. And then if they want to go-
And then if they want to go higher, they have the option to?
Exactly.
And that, that's not changing, that's not going any higher than fifty?
Uh, that was what we're-
Unless they want to.
That is our discussion, yes, yes. They, they get a, it's a default fifty, I guess we'd say, unless they choose another option and to buy out more.
Okay.
I was just making sure that was right. Numbers all over the floor. We can always come back around if you have other questions.
Yeah.
So the annual district premium, that's not per person, right?
No.
Okay. I don't really have any questions, I, I just think we should definitely do better than fifty thousand. That is ridiculously low. When I was a full-time employee at the mall, I had a hundred thousand dollar life insurance policy. So we can do better than this.
Ms. Garcia, do you want to ask a question?
Okay, so, I just want to make sure I understand, so every employee has fifty thousand, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So from there, if they chose to do the seventy-five or the hundred, the district would increase in their district premium, and so would the employee?
We would not, the district pays what we pay with our current plan. And if an employee, they have, they take on the extra cost. If, if they choose to buy, to buy more insurance than we offer.
Can I, the question being asked was that currently, everybody gets fifty thousand. Does the board want to move to now give everybody seventy-five thousand policy, a hundred thousand dollar policy, one time their salary, two time their salary? It's, it was brought up by the district lawyer that it was low by legal counsel, and so it was asked to come back to the board to decide, do you want to raise your premiums in order to give people more of a policy? Everybody would have the same policy, whichever you choose. It's not that people get a choice. You pick one of those, and then that becomes part of our contract.
So if the board chose to say a hundred thousand, right, for everybody?
Every single person would get that.
Then from there, if somebody wanted to increase, they could.
Yes.
Up to three hundred.
Up to three hundred.
Right.
Why only three hundred? Is there a reason why they maxed that out?
I, I'm sure that, you know, that's, that's their, that's theirs, I, I can't tell you why.
Through Valley Schools?
Yeah, and that could be a federal thing too, I'm not sure.
It's probably just what they, what their, what we pay into it can pay off for them to still make a profit, their business.
Right, and, you know, we don't have huge salaries in a school district.
There's nobody, nobody would, it's based on your income and there's not, most people buy life insurance based on what has to happen if they leave their family. So that number is probably there because it's a high target from anything that anybody in the district's making.
And we have to go through Valley Schools, is that by law or is that just by choice, or?
We, no, we can, we can go out to bid and change our.
I, I mean, I'm just, have we shopped around, or, I, it just seems like the max of three hundred just seems...
But remember that some, an annual, a cost to an employee in district has to pay eight hundred dollars out of pocket.
No, that's a lot.
You have to get the three hundred.
Yes, so...
I, I pay like fifty dollars for a million five, like it just seems like a lot.
It doesn't make sense to me, to be honest. But I'll let everyone else speak.
So I'm just trying to understand why-
You pay fifty dollars a month?
Yeah.
Yeah, so fifty dollars a month times twelve is...
Six hundred.
So it's pretty close to, I don't know.
I'm just trying to understand because it, for me, it just seems even three hundred thousand seems low.
I'm not sure of the cap on that number, so I don't want to, I don't want to speak for them.
I think one thing would be to get numbers on who actually buys up.
True.
Because if no, if not many people buy up, or they only buy up to two hundred, then it's not really a conversation because nobody's even increased to the maximum that they can increase to.
So from here, we're really trying to decide the flat rate of what the board wants to do.
Right.
Correct? And then have conversation of who would like to have more?
We don't even know-
You don't even have to have that conversation because that's just part of what's offered. That's offered to people.
Okay.
And we, I don't think, Edna or Dan can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we've had anybody complain that we don't go up high enough.
Okay.
That wasn't, that was not the concern, I think the concern was that is fifty fair.
Okay.
Do we even have a breakdown as far as number of employees and at what levels?
That is a lot to try to figure out, right?
If, if we're the, I'm sure, I'm not sure what you mean about which levels, which levels of salary.
In other words, do we have an idea as far as how many employees are at fifty thousand? How many have opted for higher amounts?
How many have purchased more? I, I don't have that number, I can get it.
Because it does, I mean, I don't know, maybe I'm looking at it wrong, but it sounds to me like, do we even need that conversation if everybody's happy at fifty thousand?
I think they want an increase, correct?
Well, I mean, don't, I don't think anybody's gonna say, I don't want the extra money. You know what I mean? Fifty's what we-
But if, but if, I mean, just as a, as a scenario, if we give a one percent raise after next year, and we raise it to seventy-five thousand, and there's more of a cost on the employee now, that one percent raise could, I'm, I'm not doing the math in my head right now, but it could actually make their paycheck lower if they're asked to do that. So that, that's the concern.
Probably one of the reasons that the fifty was chosen.
Okay, so we chose as a board a hundred thousand, would the employees?
Every employee that made, yeah, every employee at that point would have out of their paycheck, that's, that's correct.
Not, and it would not be a choice because it's a fringe benefit now.
I don't know that that's all that great.
So, Mr. Conchill, you have it, because I want to go. So first of all, I want to know, what would the additional cost be to the employee if they were to increase it to a hundred thousand?
Well, it depends on their age, that's what I was saying.
Every single person.
A thirty-year-old wouldn't have to pay as much as a sixty-five-year-old. So it's, I, I can't give you a flat number on it. Yes, yes.
Okay, so this, this whole conversation, I was speaking with our attorney regarding benefits for district employees. And speaking to the attorney, it was very, it seemed very insulting to be giving our benefits of only fifty thousand dollars, where other school districts are provide, like, offering a hundred and more. So this is how this whole conversation started. So I would like to see maybe looking at multiple providers and coming back and giving us other options. I kind of, and I don't know if you can reach out to another district to see how they're like, providing a hundred thousand dollars to their employees without the employees paying for it.
Size of the district's gonna be a huge factor in that, so that probably wouldn't be a good indicator. But I could reach out to other vendors perhaps and get quotes.
Yeah, because I, because I, my understanding is that the district could provide additional life insurance increase without the employee paying anything. So that I'd like to know.
Okay, my understanding is that is not the case, but I can, I can-
Okay, I would check into that.
Okay.
Because that's a, that's part of the benefits that we as a district provide to our employees. So vacation days, sick days, life insurance, you know, we want to be attractive so that people, when they want to work here, they're like, wow, we, you know, this district provides a hundred thousand dollars in life insurance. This is how many sick days I get, this is how many vacation days. You know, it's hard when you have low salaries, you know, and you can't provide, and in that sense, but the benefits also help when you're trying to, you know, hire people to work in your-
Certainly.
District. So if you can, like, I'm just gonna say if you can bring back maybe a couple other options.
Okay.
Is, there might be the fact, and I don't know if this is true or not, but that the district would pick up the money that the employee pays, which would be more for the district to cover that.
Right, and maybe you could figure that out, what that cost would be?
I'll see, I'm, I don't have enough, I'm not gonna be comfortable to speculate on that right now, but I can, I can ask that question. But my, my understanding is that it is a federal fifty thousand dollar number. So the, the district covering it, I'm not sure. I think that's actually come out of their, I think it's a tax.
And I'll be honest with you, like, for a life insurance, it's usually times three. So basically, your salary times three, to be honest, is what people should have. So I know you have a lot because, you know, that's just what I'm aware of, is that people usually get it times three to cover. So that's just, I don't know how you guys, but that's what was told to me for my life insurance, okay? So yeah, I would like to know what it would cost. I don't feel like it should be on the employee to pay for it. I think it's something that we should provide, so. Would you just get that information and bring it back? Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, can we just find out what neighboring and similar-sized districts offer as well?
I can reach out, I don't think they-
Yeah, like Combs and Florence and that.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions, no? Okay. Okay, you're staying up here, Mr. Coffinger?
I am.
So on three point five, athletic financial update?
So I was asked to provide all of the fund balances from all of the buckets that tie to athletics, and the most logical way I thought about that was just to do it by sport. It's a big one. All right, so our first page, our district costs, not specifically broken out to any sport. District funds, I should say. These are all within auxiliary. We have, and I, I, you know, we've started preliminary conversations about an athletics budget and, and kind of refining everything we're doing. And this is kind of an idea of, of the Rubik's Cube that we're going down to do that, and it's going to take some time. We have a fund in auxiliary called High School Athletics. And we started the year with negative nine point, nine, nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars. We've had, the, the second column there you see is revenue that's come in, and then you see the balance at the end. So within the district, we have High School Athletics, we have High School Pay-to-Play, we have Cactus Canyon Sports Fees, which is, my understanding is very similar to the High School Pay-to-Play. And we have Pay-to-Play Tax Credit, Four Peaks Athletic Tax Credit, Cactus Canyon Athletics Tax Credit, and we have those last two there. As a total for these district funds, this is where the bulk of our spending comes. For High School Pay-to-Play, we have historically paid AIA fees for each season. And this is where the, you know, the Pay-to-Play money, I believe we, we made a decision a couple, a month or two ago about lowering that to seventy-five dollars, but, so that's the revenue that's coming in. And we're currently at negative forty-seven thousand dollars on that one. So the total for the district funds that aren't really tied to any specific sport is negative forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. And as you flip through, I don't know, we don't, we don't need to go page by page, but for football, if we could do that one, you can see, we have two different places we have funds. So we have auxiliary, we have gifts and donations, and student activities. Just as a, as a reminder, auxiliary accounts are cash-driven, and they don't really, they don't go through the county. We, there are funds, they are our bank account, and we can spend them as, as we see fit. There are some regulations to those, but they're, you, we, the main, the main rule we follow is, if, if it's that sports fund, they spend the money. And, and they can, and we usually don't push back on, on their, those, those are their choices as, as a sport. Gifts and donations, we have Football Helmet Fund, and we're in the hole in that one as well. And student activities, that's the process where we go through Student Council. It is a club, it's considered a football club, and they have ten thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twelve cents. So just wanted to go through another one of those, where you see the three different pots that we can potentially have. Not all sports have three different pots, but most do have auxiliary and student activities. Football's the only one that has a Gifts and Donations account.
Did you say why is that? That's because I don't even know how that can be negative. Because the reason that fund was set up was because we took donations and we had an overage. And so there was a donation of five thousand dollars that was over what we had. So I don't know how that became negative. But that was before Mr. Coffinger's time, so that was a few years back.
And we had money set aside?
We had money set, we had five thousand dollars set aside to re-furbish the, or re-
Recondition it?
You know how you reinsure them? That money was put there so that when it was time to re-certify them, we had the money there. So I'm not sure how it got negative. We've only recertified them once, so that would be something we should look into probably.
I think so. Okay, so, I don't know, where you want to begin? Ms. Conley, do you have any questions? I don't know, I don't know, circle back. Um, Mr. Bowers?
I guess, do we have like any idea how we ended up in debt, in debt so badly here?
I will, I don't want to, this is prior to my time. I do believe we were enabled to do so, and we shouldn't have been, and we continue to. And, you know, we, we just had a rec come through for Pay-to-Play, for those AIA fees. Last week, we had a rec come through that was for eighty-five hundred bucks for the fall season. And we put a stop to spending out of accounts that don't have money because they are cash accounts. So M and O had to pick that up if we wanted to pay for the sports season. So unfortunately, that's, you know, unexpected M and O costs are recurring because we have negative balance in, in some of these accounts. And historically, if we have paid for something out of an account, I believe that's what we just kept doing, regardless of if there was money there.
Ms. Wallace, if you want to?
So a couple things, we've not put anything in Pay-to-Play this year, even though sports have started because we're waiting for in-touch. So we didn't want to get that mess going, so we just asked parents to wait. The other thing, if I understand correctly from working with the budget in athletics, is that the negative is carried over year to year. So even though we closed the books on June thirtieth, we don't clear out our negative balances. And so what historically I've brought and tried to explain is that we're not a district that can run unfunded by athletics. So the coaches do a big part, the, the parents and families of athletics do parts, but we don't have, there's, there's no money to pay AIA fees, or there's no money to pay the transportation fees to send the kids to the schools when they have to compete. And so there, I don't know that there's been a committed amount to say, this is what it costs to run this program, and this is what the district needs to put in every year to make it a zeroed balance, you know? And then tell coaches, this is what we're paying for, this is what you have to pay for. So if you, we're gonna buy new uniforms once every three years, if you want them more than that, you have to fundraise for that. We're gonna buy these pieces of equipment for you. If you want something other than that, you have to fundraise for that. So I think that, that's what Mr. Cantrell and Mr. Hofer and I are trying to put together because the board's been asking for this for years, and it never gets like resolved or cleaned up. And so there needs to be very clear guidelines about what you as a board are willing to fund, and coaches understanding that funding, and then they understand that in order for them to have more or do more than that, they're gonna have to do work on their side. And students and families have to understand that. And the whole premise also behind it is that it's a lot of money for kids in our community to pay to play three or four sports a year, if we're asking them to pay even seventy-five dollars now. And so how do we give kids opportunities when those are huge opportunities, when in other districts, kids are playing and playing in a five thousand dollar club on top of it? And we're just trying to give kids time in a season. So there's definitely work that Mr. Cantrell, Mr. Hofer and I know we have to do. I think this was the start when the recommendation came from the board, so that we can move forward now, figure out how, you know, it's easy to cut coaches- figure out how, you know, it's easy to cut coaches from this side. It's not easy to run a good team if you don't have the coaches you need. So, can they get, can they fund some of their coaches and take the coaches that we give them as a district? Does that then increase when they build their program and they're putting more money in? So, those are all conversations we've been trying to have. And our big thing is just trying to hold on to coaches for more than a year or two so that they can help build their programs. And I think we're finally at a place where we have coaches that are dedicated to us, dedicated to the kids and the programs, and they really want to build the programs. And we needed that buy-in to kind of move forward.
If I could piggyback as well, what the, what the district has picked up over the last few years is, is kind of muddy. I don't, there hasn't been clear, and you know, we'll pick up at expenditure here and there. But again, not clear guide as to what is a district, this, this is a district cost, and this is a sports cost. Similar to the uniforms conversation. But because we are in the hole in those accounts, and we should not be operating in the hole in any of those accounts, that is M and O money that we have not been spending and that we will need to in the future if we're gonna maintain having, not having these negative balances. So, that's M and O money that we're gonna need to, to, you know.
To provide.
To budget for.
To get, to, do we have to get it to a zero balance, right?
Yeah.
Correct. And, and so, what, what we have been spending out of Pay to Play, we can't do anymore. So, it has to be M and O.
And we did that with that AIA fee that he just spoke about. We took it out of M and O so that we wouldn't get more negative anywhere over here on the district balances.
But you and staff are working on, like, this is how much you can spend, don't spend more than that, right?
Creating a budget.
I think it's gonna be maybe more so guidelines as to, the district will pay for your season fees, but if you want equipment, or if you want football uniforms, those, so each coach knows, okay, that's on me to figure out how I need to get that money and get that done. So, trying to come up with some guidelines and some, some consistency across it all is what we're, we're trying to do.
I think the hard work's gonna come in deciding how much we're willing to fund because the negative balances are on, there's that one in, in football, I know. But the, but most of them are on our side of the accounts from where that, you know, Pay to Play or, and like Mr. Coffinger just said, we've lowered Pay to Play to get more participants. So, that kind of hurts that budget in a sense, unless we get double the kids to play.
Which would be more coaches.
Mr. Bowden, do you have any more questions?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Ms. Conley, I'm gonna circle back. You good?
Ms. Garcia, let's go, girl.
Okay, so first of all, like Ms. Wallace stated, we have probably about two hundred kids that haven't paid their Pay to Play. So, that's about fifteen thousand because we're waiting for In Touch to take place.
In Touch, so I, I'll just happily tell you, we had our training today, it is up and running. We need to make refinements to it, we need to customize it, but it is there. So, I just wanted to put that to sense.
We're not ready for you to pay yet, just yet. But it's there, but it's so close.
I have the icon on my computer.
Yes.
So, what we can do soon for the parents to be able to do their Pay to Play, which will change that balance, for sure.
Sure, yeah.
Okay. I know like a couple of years ago, before you were here, probably four, five, six, seven, ten years ago, Mrs. Goff and Heather and Deana and I sat down with some other people, and we started kind of trying to figure out exactly what Mrs. Wallace is talking about, like what the district's gonna pay for, what the coaches are responsible. And I think we came to the conclusion that we're not budgeting enough for the stipends slash salaries on top of everything else that we're trying to do. So, I think, you know, we kind of talked to you in meetings in regards to, are we really negative? Or are we just really not budgeting for, you know, and that's what you've been trying to figure out coming into this, is I don't feel like we're putting enough money into that account to be able to sustain that. So, the question is, do we take the coaches' salaries and the stipends and we put it, should that be separate from everything else? That was something that we wanted to do to figure out, you're working on that, correct?
Right, that's the idea of like, we're gonna have to pick it up with M and O now because there is no money to spend where we've previously been spending, it's in the hole. So, now it's an M and O cost, now it's affecting all of our M and O, including, you know, not extracurricular, but our maintenance and operations.
And then once we do that, you and Coach Norm and every, and Chad Cantrell, you guys are gonna sit down and create, like as Coach Norm, as the Athletic Director, what the district wants to pay for, or what we, what you think we can pay for, and then what the coaches are gonna be responsible, so they know as we're being, going into the next year, right?
Yes.
What we need to fundraise for.
So, we would like to be able to bring that back to you at the November work session, if you are okay with that. And, and I know it's pushing it out, but Mr. Hofer's in a new position, Mr. Cantrell's in a new position. And Mr. Coffinger is working really hard, he's met with us, with the three of us, to try to figure out. He was trying to, he's been doing a lot of work to get In Touch going, and then figure balances out and kind of figure out where money is. So, it just gives us all some time to kind of come back and say, this is what we're gonna need. It's not, it, it's, it, there's a system to it. It's just hard because it's gonna, it's like Mr. Coffinger said, it's gonna have to come out of M and O. They're not self-funded, I mean, they're just not, they're not teams like that. So, and we have to give those opportunities because those opportunities are so important for so many of those kids.
So, when the In Touch takes place, then parents will get onto the In Touch, and they'll be able to pay their Pay to Play. What else will they be able to do?
Anything they would pay.
Anything that's gonna be paid is gonna go through In Touch.
Yearbook, gifts and donations, any money, it's a, anything that we would normally receipt can be paid through In Touch.
Our, our, or I should say, my goal, when it's running clean and, and everybody's had time to breathe and accept it, is that it's, we're not taking cash anymore, we're not handling things that parents are going on there and putting the money where they want it to go, and then it goes directly into the account.
And these numbers will probably look a lot better once we get the Pay to Play and all of that. I mean, we're still gonna have to have discussion of how we want to handle the salaries.
I think the piece that you'll feel more ease about is that the money went to the right place. Because I think that's been a lot of the conversation and questioning and concerns is that has the money always been directed in the right place? And I think that will help with In Touch.
It's gonna, you know, the control of, of that is gonna be much better because, I mean, we might not even touch anything if a parent does it online themselves, it just goes. They click a button on where they want it to go, the funds go there. So, and there's, there's immediately a trace of it, you know, that, so I am quite, I, I believe that just the integrity of the, of the, of the system of us receiving money is gonna be light years better. But the other thing I'm quite excited about is the tax credit. We are considering the idea of just putting all of our Pay to Play in tax credit because it doesn't hurt anything to do that, but it immediately generates a tax credit receipt when a parent donates to the Pay to Play. And af- after that, it's on the, on the parent, if they want to file it, whatever. But they're gonna have a receipt generated, even if they never stepped foot in our, in our, on our campus. It's just gonna come up through In Touch, oh, you donated to this one, that's tax credit, here's your tax credit receipt.
And that, that's how most of the bigger districts do it. If you're donating the money to your athletic, you're not worrying about what you're paying for summer camp or pay. It's all going through a tax credit so that, then you can see too that that money's there.
I'm hoping that the ease of that with, you know, hopefully some, some push as a district for tax credit is really, that can help us a lot. And if we get the word out and you can, all you gotta do is jump on In Touch, and it's not, it ain't gonna cost you anything, it's tax credit.
I don't even know if, I'd say Coach Norm, but it's probably more appropriate to say Mr. Hofer. But I know that when he did the presentation, we had like an all meeting, he explained all that, and I think the parents are just patiently waiting, so.
I think some of the other things that, you know, we've, there's another district that uses In Touch that we look at a lot just because it's one that has had things going. If you pull that one up, there's a button you can click on for Donors Choose. There's a button you, so there's things that you can start. Mr. Hofer, Mr. Cantrell had talked about putting places for people to donate for specific things, so they could see volleyball nets, or they could see new goals for soccer. And I think the more that people get in there, there'll be opportunities for people to see if they can donate or have opportunities to have people donate, it's all right there now. So, it's not like a coach over here running something, or a school trying to do something. There'll be more opportunities right on that main page for people to get to.
But we really do need to figure out if you guys can sit down with that football helmet because that came from a family and a company, and that needs to be in there for specifically that.
Mr. Cantrell?
All my questions got answered.
Oh, good, that's good. Ms. Conley, I'm gonna circle back to you, you guys?
Okay, so I have a lot to say. I'm gonna tell you right now, this has been going on way too long. And when you say this come back in November, you're saying November twenty twenty-one, right? Okay, I just want to make sure.
November, in a couple of months.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because like, this has been going on for like seven years now.
In a couple of months.
Okay. So, one, what is the budget that is given to athletics now? What is the amount?
It's currently ninety thousand dollars.
Ninety thousand.
I, I don't, that's, I know that's the number that's allocated and put in our vision system. I don't know how close we've gotten to that over the last few years. I don't know off the top of my head what, what expenditures specifically have come out of there, but I have seen that, that, that is the number.
So, right now, M and O provides ninety thousand dollars to athletics. And then athletics takes that money and then they do whatever they need to do, right? Obviously, that doesn't seem like a lot of money.
Can I ask a question, though? Is that money transferred there at the beginning of the year?
It's a budget.
Yep.
It's a budget, it's not, it's, that's where we, that's the hard part, is we have to switch gears now. This isn't a cash, I didn't put ninety thousand dollars in the account. I said, of all the M and O, this little pie piece of ninety thousand, you're allowed to spend.
That's what they're allowed to use, right?
Yeah, but it doesn't mean it was. And if it wasn't, it's back, they could have spent sixty thousand, they could have spent twenty-five thousand. And then it would be put back into the M and O, and it would, it would continue, yeah.
And there's not clear tracking of if it was spent, overspent, underspent, if some of it went to negate the negative balance.
I, I can find that out, I just haven't.
Okay, so that was like, my one question is, what is budget? And then like Ms. Garcia said, that we did sit down, and I think we do need to have a clear understanding what the district's responsibility is and what that cost looks like. And then what is it gonna be up to the Athletic Department to fundraise, booster, whatever it is that they're gonna need to provide for athletics, okay?
Yep.
So, that is something, that's a piece that's critical that we need to know because then that there will give us a general idea of what we need to truly budget for.
Right, that's, and that's going back to Ms. Wallace, what, what is on the district, what's on the sport, exactly.
Right. And then, as far as the accounting for it, one of the things that I've always seemed to struggle with is that we have these accounts. It shows what's in them, what gets deposited in them. But the thing that it's missing is where is the money being spent on? So, you have Pay to Play, yeah, that's great. Where's the breakdown of where that Pay to Play money went to?
I can get that for you. That's just, I mean, that's not a, that's not a governing board report that we have.
No, I know, but I'm saying like, because we're in such a mess with athletics, I really think, and I think even moving forward, I don't know if In Touch will help with this, but I think it's really, it's disheartening as a parent when you, and some football parents pay a thousand dollars a year, they don't even know where their money's going. So, when you're collecting fees or monies or whatever, like I think it, to be transparent, like we need to know, okay, so athletics has twenty thousand dollars, right? Just for example, that's what they start with. At the end of the year, they have negative ten thousand. Well, where did the twenty thousand, what was it spent on? I think we really need to look at where the money is going. And I'm just not gonna say, I mean, it's not just athletics, I think a lot of our accounts, we need to be a little bit more detailed on what we have, what we're spending on, and what we have left. Does that make sense, so?
Sure, and.
Like, I, I just really feel like.
And we, and if you want us to change our voucher system, we can, we can look at that, but that's, that's.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you could just do a report, okay, athletics, we bought helmets, we bought this, we bought this, we bought this, we bought this. This is what we have, this is what we spent the money on, this is where we're at. I think that would be, that would help with a lot of questions of like, where's helmet money? And where is this, and where is that? Because then we would know what was spent and where it was spent, on what it was spent on. Okay, so that's, that's just me, I, I, I'm not an accountant. But, I mean, I just, I know how to budget my money, and I know when I have money, what I'm spending it on, and where it's going to, and how to stay within my means. So, I, I just feel like we've been struggling with this for so long, so long. And it's just gotta get cleaned up, it really does. So, those are the things that I would ask for you to come back with, is what's the district responsibility look like? What's athletics responsibility? And then where we can adjust the budget moving forward? And then, um, just for now on, like a detail of what is being spent out of athletics would be helpful.
So, I'm, I'm, you get the auxiliary funds report, there's about a hundred and forty accounts, if memory serves. You're saying out of each one of those, you wanna, every P O that came out of there?
Well, I don't think, I think just for athletics as an overall, like, so this is all athletics money, and this is what was spent out of it, and this is what we have left.
Okay, so like, specific to the district funds you're speaking, those, those funds? Because I mean, like, tax credit volleyball is, is an athletic fund, but it's its own fund.
Exactly. So, I'm saying the money's at, right, what she said, per sport.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions before he's done?
I just have one more, Dan, real quick.
Sure.
Oh, the salaries, go ahead.
Yeah, in addition to that, the salaries, so how much are we paying in stipends that's coming out of this budget, so we can see, because that's a huge.
Right, and, and I guess I would, that's.
That's what, the work we're doing.
I wish I could tell you, that's an easy report for me to run, it's all over the place. I believe we kind of operated in a fashion of, if there's money in that one, it comes out of that one this year. Last year, there wasn't money in that one, so we didn't do that. But we did, it, it's, it's gonna be, like, I, it's gonna take some time, but that's what we're looking for.
So, on the stipends, that's the district's responsibility to pay, right? Or is that coming out of?
Well, what we, what Norm and I put into place is that we gave you so many stipends based on athletes, but also based on what makes sense. Because sometimes you need one more than what we could give, you know, than what your athletes were. And so, if you wanted more than what we allocated, you had to have your own funds to pay for that. Like, football did that this year.
Okay.
They wanted two more coaches, so they're paying for two more coaches.
And then, and that's coming like out of the auxiliary.
That one was their student activities, actually, because their auxiliary was negative.
For the two more coaches that they need.
But, so that's, that's exactly what I'm talking about. This year, this year it's student activities, because that's a positive balance.
Right.
The year before that, I don't know, the year before that, I don't know, so.
And I do want to say, like, I know that we looked at, I don't know if you did it or Dr. Anderson, but we had a chart, and, but, the thing is, is too, is I feel like, you know, I know we have to stay within our means, but who are we to say how many, you know, like, to have a successful.
Program.
Program, they need, they need to have coaches. Who are we to tell them how many coaches? But I understand that, you know, and I believe that we did a fair amount. And if they want in addition, then, you know, they've got to fundraise. But I don't want to limit that, if that's what they need, then let's let them fundraise for that, for sure.
I just think we need a consistency and a clear idea of what's supposed to go where, who's supposed to pay what. Like, we just have to.
Right.
Clean it up.
First.
And then my question with Pay to Play, so in the past, you know, there's been, monies for Pay to Play would go here, go there. I know In Touch is gonna clean that up. Is there gonna be a way that, as a parent, if I don't play, I don't pay, but my student is, my child is gonna play, and will a coach know that the student didn't pay? Like, how is that generated?
For Pay to Play, all of In Touch is based on that student ID number.
Okay.
So, it will all be, always be tied to that student.
You'll get charged your Pay to Play now.
So, in theory, and I, I don't know this for sure, but I'm, in theory, we're gonna run a report that says unpaid Pay to Play. And we'll get all the names right there of, of everyone who hasn't paid.
Okay, so the coaches will get a report and they'll see that.
I believe that, I mean, there's no reason it shouldn't work that way, I haven't seen the report, but it, it seems entirely possible.
Well, I just don't want to get into the situation where people are, like, students are playing without paying, which we've had in the past, and of course, we have a program, you know, Project Help, that if a student- that if a student cannot afford to pay, then we can go to Project Help and Rosie will help with that student. So we just wanna make sure that everything is in line.
Yeah.
And the funds are going where they need to go.
Well, and now you're gonna get, you'll get charged a fee for athletics. So you're gonna have, it's gonna show that you now have a balance that you have to pay.
Right.
And it'll be, it's not somebody tracking on sheets.
Like me as a parent, I can get a notification saying, you still owe your pay to play.
Right.
Well, yeah, but coach couldn't still make you play, you don't even know. You know, some, I just wanna make sure the coaches are aware.
They're pretty, they.
I will say they are pretty good.
They are really good about making sure they know, yeah.
Okay.
Without embarrassing them.
Yeah, yeah.
They've done a pretty good job.
Yeah.
And they're also really good about trying to help kids find different ways to do it. Like with Rosie, you have to give her some of your time, you know, and so kids have to do some of that.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Mr. Conflender? No?
Thank you.
Okay, can we take a five minute recess, please? I'm just gonna call a five minute recess.
Coach Norm, do you think with the boosters, you can kinda tie the unanswered?
We're gonna start off with Mr. Hofer for Booster Club discussion, item three point six.
Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the board. How are we tonight?
How are you?
Today, September, I guess.
Okay.
So, uh, little recap, can I go back and touch on a little couple of things Dan said, real quick?
Sure.
Um, so out of that ninety thousand dollars, thirty-six and change is fall sports stipends right there.
Thirty-six out of the ninety?
That's just stipends.
Okay.
That's not a bus, that's not officials, that's not A I A fees, that's, that, that puts a big chunk right there. Um, just right offhand, that's one thing I, I know he said that, I do know how, it's right at thirty-six thousand.
Okay.
And that's not including the two coaches that football's paying on their own. So we have, we're paying six football coaches, three volleyball coaches, a swim coach, cross country coach, two cheer coaches.
And you're gonna get that from Booster?
For what?
You're gonna get that out of Booster?
Hey, I'm working on Boosters, hey. Boosters is doing well, we're good.
All right, so give us the Booster update.
But that going back, just quickly, that, I feel like we need to put more money into that account, just because that's a big chunk already.
I think if you look back nineteen or eighteen, I can't remember exactly which, cause the twenty's a wash, obviously. We had like eighty-four thousand dollars in stipends.
I, I think the, when he and I sat and tried to just ballpark everything, we were at close to a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just with transportation, A I A, coach, like the must haves to run a program. And that's what was hard, that we were budgeting about half of what we truly needed, which was why we were sixty in the hole every year.
Well, I think there was other. Yes, we are off the agenda, we're gonna get back on Booster.
Right. Right, so Boosters.
Point of order.
We had, after our fall sports night, we had twenty-six people sign up for their sign up genius. They only recognized six of those names, so that's twenty people they've never seen before, so that's a good, that's a good jump. Boosters was able to raise four hundred dollars selling merchandise, just that night, and just T-shirts, people walking in. So I talked to Boosters about expanding their, their sale, um, at concession, during the concession games, during football games, of their merchandise. They're kind of pigeonholed in the corner, if you've ever been to one of the football games. So we talked about getting a table out in the front, so they're more visible. So as people come by, it'll just generate more revenue for them. And, um, we talked about making like a, out of like a shopping mall, a little strip mall area out there with all the concessions, like the popcorn. Uh, one, I think Swim wants to do I C's at the football games. Um, cheerleaders wanna sell clothes, so we were talking about putting them all lined up in a little L shape, so the parents could come by and swing by and see all the things that all the clubs are offering. And I think it'll help res, uh, raise money for all of the clubs in general, plus Boosters.
So, Mr., um, this is Coach Norm.
Whatever, I'm good. I like, I actually prefer that, but it's all right.
So I know last time we discussed Booster, we were looking at how to kinda revamp it, to say, and how to make it more productive to help athletics. So are you giving us an update on?
So every group that's participated so far has an account through Boosters.
Okay.
So all the coach needs to do is send them an in, uh, quote for whatever they wanna purchase. Let's say girl soccer wanted to buy tennis shoes. They send them a quote, hey, I need, um, three hundred and sixty dollars in tennis shoes. They send, they just pay the invoice and pay for it. Nothing, nothing comes through the school anymore. We wanna try to keep as much funds out of the school district as possible.
Okay.
That way, it's more readily available. I think we've stripped, um, with Stuko, we've streamlined the process and how they can, how they can get their purchase order streamlined through the school district, so the funds they have in their accounts are quicker to access. But we've also done that through Boosters. So instead of Boosters writing a check to the school, the school depositing, coach writing a check, or P O, P O having to get cleared to go through the Boosters to get paid, or I mean, through finances to get paid, now they just send that invoice to Boosters directly and invoice, and they pay it right away.
Is there a limit?
Well, up to, into their account.
Right.
Oh, it's in their specific account, okay.
They started a specific account, but Boosters understands like esports is new to our, our school this year. Well, they asked about, um, if they had a budget for jerseys or shirts. So I went to Boosters and I said, hey, you know, this is brand new, they haven't had any time to work with you. She's willing to put in time and effort, is there any way you could come up front and purchase their, their, these uniforms for their little jersey tops, or whatever they're calling them, for their esports? And they said, yeah, not a problem, get us a quote, we'll go ahead and take care of that. So again, instead of her, instead of them writing a check to us, I'm gonna take that quote from whatever company is, give it straight to Boosters and Boosters is gonna go ahead and pay that for them. Even though they don't have an account set up with them yet. So Boosters understands that they have money left over from previous years that should be allocated towards the students. So they're gonna do that slowly but surely. They just don't want coaches, as we've seen in the past, we've had coaches come up and say, hey, you know, if you can loan me five hundred dollars for new basketballs, I'll come work six concessions. Well, they show up for two and two of them, they only have one or two parents. So the concessions, the Boosters never made back the money they donated to the kids. The kids, that program never really put any time or effort to earn that money. And I think one of the things is, you know, trying to educate our youth to be responsible adults, you don't get a paycheck till you work. You want some money, you gotta go, put some time and effort into it, earn it a little bit. And I think that's, some of the coaches need to be aware of that as well. Boosters isn't just write me a check and I walk away, you know?
Well, you do know that like students, that fundraise, that goes into student account. Boosters is separate, so really for Boosters, you're really not supposed to have children, I don't think, fundraising.
But, so like the popcorn machine.
Uh huh.
Students, like Swim can go do the popcorn machine and that money's gonna go back to Swim.
Okay.
Stuff like that. In the concession stand itself, no, it has to be adult driven, because it's all food handlers and money.
Right.
The students that volunteer in the Boosters, usually like, if I'm at a window and someone orders a hamburger and a purple Gatorade, I yell that out.
They're runners.
I turn around, someone's handing me a hamburger and someone's bringing me a purple Gatorade.
Okay.
And that's usually what the students do in the concession stands.
Okay.
Or football does a good job of meeting them when they order, when they do their orders and they have ten cases of soda to carry in and all these cases of water. Football does a lot of time with them, meeting them after school and carrying the concessions, carrying the stuff in and stuff like that to earn clock hours, to earn that extra little cash.
Is there gonna be a way, you're, like you're talking, um, like cheer and all the other sports, so they're all doing these things. Is there a way to communicate so two sports aren't doing the same thing? Or is it okay for the two sports, one to sell clothes over here, one to sell clothes over here? Like how are we going to? Cause I know in the past, if Boosters was selling it, nobody else could sell it, so how have we fixed that?
Well, the same thing at, like a football game, um, we can't have R O T C selling hamburgers, cause that takes directly away from Boosters, cause Boosters is selling that item. Uh, what Boosters offered to do is eighty percent of the popcorn sales goes straight to whatever club's selling popcorn. So one, one club's gonna say, stand up to sell popcorn. Couple of the clubs, the esports, has said they wanna do snow cones. So the, all that money's gonna go straight back to them. As far as fundraising at the same time, that all goes through Stuko. If football wants to do a, like cheer wants to do a clothing fundraiser, they've made the proposal with Stuko. Student council then approves that, okay, for this two week period, you're the only one that can sell clothes. Now, you know, uh, boys basketball could come sell I C's or something, because that's not conflicting with the clothes sale.
So the paper process is to go through Stuko, get approval for a length of time?
Yep, and, um, we streamline that process. It used to be once a month, it used to be twice a month. She had a meeting at lunch where you actually had to go in as the advisor. Sit in during your lunch, the teacher had to give up their lunchtime, take a student in, sit in this presentation, present to student council what they wanted to do, and then they voted on it and it was approved. Now it's just simply send a little blurb to student, student council on an email and they just do it on their own. And they do it every, they do Tuesdays and Thursdays during the week. So I could send them an email on Monday afternoon saying I wanted to say, start a sale on Friday. It'd be approved and I could start doing that as low as a couple, three days later, four days later. So we only have one fundraiser going on at a time. But like at football games, there is a limit, we can't compete with what Boosters is doing because that's taking money out of whoever's, you know, whatever groups are in Boosters.
Booster sells candy, drinks, hamburgers.
Hot dogs, nachos, pretzels.
Clothes.
Clothes, but another group could sell clothes.
Okay.
Um, it just doesn't say A J or Prospect or Athletics. It would just, you know, football sells their old jerseys at games. That doesn't compete with them selling T-shirts, cause they're not the same item. Does that make sense?
So if there was new T-shirts or things like that for other sports, they can't do that because Boosters has it in the?
Could they sell it during the game? I bet Boosters wouldn't have a problem with it because it would say football or something. It wouldn't be a direct correlation with Prospect or Athletics or just A J blingie Prospector shirts. I don't think they would have a problem with that, so to say. But if they're selling A J Prospector Athletic shirts and then someone else comes out and sells them, that's a direct competition.
Kind of like the shirt you have on, is that?
Um, I don't know if they sell.
They sell socks, they sell a lot, and that's the discussion we need to have, so we're making sure we're on the same page is, you know, continuing that conversation. you know, continuing that conversation of who can do what, so we're not, like, we're working together as a team. You know, that's the hard part, is making sure we're all on the same page and not feeling like one is selling, yeah.
Yeah. Well, Boosters did say that any of their merchandise would be included in their sales report for that night, so that would be going to the teams.
Oh, that's good then.
Yeah. So it's definitely going back, it's not, no, they're not saying, "I'm gonna sell shirts and you can't," and we're keeping that profit. There, they sell two shirts and make forty bucks, that forty bucks is gonna go into the food account, it'll be separate, you know, merchandise and food, but it would go into the total to be split up and divvied up that night. So there's, even though they're saying, "You can't sell shirts, we are," that money's still going back to whatever athlete, whatever group is working that night. Any other questions?
So, I'm gonna go start, Ms. Conley. Ms. Conley, have any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Bowers?
Uh, no questions, I'm just glad the Stuko PO process is being streamlined. When I was in Stuko, that was such a tedious process, so-
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, very happy about that.
I know.
Me as a coach, I was too.
Ms. Garcia, do you wanna, I know you could go on for hours with this, um-
And you guys have my number, you have questions, call me. I'm shy.
You're good. The only thing, I would just like to know, for, like, Boosters, what is, okay, so they're supposed to benefit all athletics programs, correct?
Every activity. That's why they're giving esports money, that's why they gave the chess club money.
Right. So, what is the process? So, if you're a volleyball parent and Boosters is doing concessions, what is, how much of that is going back to that program?
So it's clock hours. So, July fourth is the only event we've had yet that we can actually go off the new model. So July fourth, they made, uh, twenty-eight and some change that night.
Right.
After you split that up fifty percent, fifty percent, we'll just say fourteen hundred to keep the math even.
Okay.
Out of that fourteen hundred dollars, they divided up, how many hours were worked? It came out to twenty-eight dollars and I wanna say sixty-nine cents or ninety-six cents an hour. So, football had thirty-three clock hours. So, in between the two shifts, they had people that worked for thirty-three hours. Well, they did thirty-three times that twenty-eight, ninety, whatever, and it came up with the nine hundred and eighty-six dollars that football made in the eight hours that they were actually there. You know, they got thirty-three clock hours, because they had more than one person.
Okay.
But they made a grand in eight hours. That's not bad.
So, for every sport that Boosters is doing concessions, some of that money goes back to that sport?
Not to that sport.
No, not to that sport.
So football has a football game, football has, uh, September twenty-third, we play in a ski at home.
Well, football always gets the most of everything, so I'm just trying to see for other programs, how are they gonna benefit from this start?
Volleyball game starts, Booster sends out the week before saying, "Hey, for this week, we have a volleyball game on Tuesdays and Thursday, and we have a football game on Friday night. Please sign up for these events."
On signup genius.
On signup genius.
Signup genius, okay.
And so as people sign up, they fill up the shifts, let's say, all volleyball signed up for all the foot- for the football game. Football parents signed up for the volleyball game. Whatever's money, whatever money is made at that volleyball game will be fifty-fifty split.
Okay.
Out of that fifty percent will go to whatever's club is working. It could be a mix of volleyball and football, could be all volleyball, could be swim, could be chess. It's just whoever signs up, they get the hours.
Okay.
And how much ever money is made gets divvied, divvied up, and they get that profit.
Okay. They get all, the fifty percent.
The fifty percent, yeah.
Right.
So, foot- at a football game, there could be two cheer parents.
Yeah, if you have five volleyball moms volunteering at football, then those five volleyball moms would be benefiting the volleyball program, because then they would get a piece of what's being raised at football, correct?
They get their hours times whatever the hourly rate is.
At the Fourth of July, you had one cheerleader or one something and one-
Yeah, there was, I think, two sw-
Golf or tennis or something?
One, one hour swim, two hours for tennis. Uh, I wanna say cheerleading maybe had three hours.
And they too also got-
And they all got chunks, yeah. I think the smallest one, whoever, they rounded it up and gave them thirty bucks.
So whoever's in there is a breakdown, because when you walk into Boosters, you sign up and you sign up for that sport still, correct?
Correct. And I actually started a Google Sheet, um, because they have an iPad, and I just got their iPad linked through the school. So when they walk in, they'll actually log into a sheet, a Google Doc, and then it's shared with me, and if the board would like it, I can have it shared with you guys. That, so after every event, we'll see how many people worked, um, how many hours total made, and what each person's gonna make, or what each sport will make out of that night.
Okay, and so when they make that amount that goes into the Booster account, and then, so if I wanna get uniforms, or I wanna buy, if I'm a coach and I wanna buy something, I'd have to go and make a request to Booster and then they would purchase it, is that how it works?
Mm-hmm. So it, and it, you know, it's a request, it's just a form saying, "Hey, what, what team, what coach, um, what I'm buying, um, and where I rea- like, when I raise the money, and how much it's gonna cost, and include an invoice."
Okay, and then Booster goes ahead and makes that process.
Yep, and then Boosters pays them directly, so it stays out of our hands.
Okay. So there's credits, there's not checks physically being, it's credit that all that time.
Credit, yes, yes.
And it's for any activity, right, that you, like, there was just an email that went out, they need help on Saturday doing something. So, if you went and worked that, you would get time with them, right?
Yes, correct. So it's like clock, it's just clock hours?
Yeah.
And then whatever they've made goes to those, that was clock hours, and goes into your account.
Can you guys see the clock hours number? Yeah, well, I think policy states that they have to, um, submit their expenditures.
Yeah.
And I think it was July, correct?
They did.
Did they, did we get a copy of that?
Mm-hmm.
I don't remember seeing it, did you, Cammy? I don't remember seeing it, if you could resend it, I'd like to see it. Is there, is it on there?
You saw it, you didn't, it, we, I'll talk to you more about it.
Okay, is there hours?
No.
That are on there?
It's their, it's whatever their accountant sent.
Okay, so I'm looking, I'm looking for hours and-
Well, July's before we're back, so there's, there's no events. The fir- they haven't had any events yet, because there's been no sporting, there's nothing.
But you're sending stuff out for future, right?
Yes.
Signups, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Boosters are, yes, correct.
So when you do that, can we see that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Mr. Control, um, and I sat down, we created a Google Doc, actually, it's a set spreadsheets for monthly disclosures from what they started with at the beginning of the month, what they've made that month, what clubs they've given money to, and the end of the month amount. But since we haven't had any events, there hasn't been any change in their funds.
Right.
Except they paid for, I don't know, eight hundred dollars in flags for the school or something, for the high school.
Well, we're gonna be coming up on volleyball starting, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Football, so like, we wanna kind of see how this new, because this is a new system, like, we didn't do this before, so we kind of wanna see how this is working.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's like I said, I, I made that spreadsheet, and then Mr. Control and I sat down, did their expenditures, but I had them do a signup sheet, so we can see exactly how many hours each person's getting.
Okay.
And then what amount that person made per game.
Okay. Alright, sounds good. Sounds like we're moving in a better direction than we were.
Mm-hmm.
We're getting-
Awesome.
Any other questions? No? Thank you.
Well, thank you. Let's have a great evening.
You too. Okay, three point seven, facilities rental lease, Mr. Lundquist. So cute.
Well, good evening, or afternoon, actually. Madam President, members of the board, Ms. Wallace. Uh, my name is Zach Lundquist, I am the facilities rental coordinator for the school district. Uh, the information I'm providing you today is just the, uh, current classification fee schedule for the different rental organizations who do want to rent out, uh, our school district facilities. Uh, the changes that, uh, is recommended by the program, as well as the, uh, recommend- uh, recommended, uh, facility fee schedule too. So, the current policy is, uh, listed at the top for classification for fee schedule. The changes that the program would like to make is, uh, move, uh, some organizations out of classification two to classification three. Uh, these classifications for three are, uh, adult civic organizations, uh, that don't benefit student engagement, uh, but keeping any student organization or youth empowerment group into class two, so it's a lower fee schedule for them, so. Um, and also just detailing more information about, like, uh, providing, uh, uh, the, uh, non, what was it, nonprofit organizations, uh, just, uh, actual proof of, uh, a 501(c) so that they can classify themselves in that classification schedule. But, that's pretty much all that was recommended for the change and the fee schedule. Um, I didn't provide the original document for the, uh, the current fee schedule, uh, but I can provide that, uh, to you guys if needed. Uh, the, uh, recommended, uh, fee schedule is just a little bit just tampering from class two and three, just, uh, for those different fees to be associated with the different organizations. Any questions on that so far?
I don't know, I could've sworn there was a fee schedule on here at one point.
There, if you scroll down further.
Is it on there?
It's, yeah.
I know, I've seen it.
If you scroll farther.
Okay.
There's like four different pages. So this is the recommended, uh-
Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
That's the recommended fees, or is that what we're charging currently?
Uh, that's the recommended ones. Uh, I, I have the physical copy of the current schedule, um, I can provide that right now if you'd like.
Are we, are the fees being raised or lowered?
Uh, yeah, we are just raising the fees just a little bit, uh, for, uh, class three and four. Um, we haven't had any facility rental programs, uh, from the past year, just because of COVID. So, um, that account has been drying up pretty much, so we're trying to, uh, reinvest into that account, so that way we can do some, uh, some upgrades and also just bring a healthy balance to that account.
The last page on the fee schedule where it talks about, or compares us to, what is it, the other, uh, school districts?
Yes.
That's the recommended fees, it looks like we're still good grief, we're the cheapest one of the whole bunch.
Uh, yes, uh, some of those-
Okay, let me rephrase that, cheapest one of the whole bunch as far as a performing arts center.
Yes, uh, some of those performing arts centers do offer more in terms of what they provide, so, uh, they have more, um, use in like audio and lighting technology, as well as, uh, uh, they have more seating capacity and, uh, open their facilities out to, um, like, the little, uh, drama room that we have in the back, that room gets rented out to at a separate, uh, fee too. So, it's only the base amount that I put in there.
So what you're saying is we could be comparable if we added that room in this two days?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, it looks like, actually, we're, we're not in bad shape.
Yeah, we're pretty, oh, go on.
I'm sorry, these other, uh, these other fees, these other, with these other, uh, facilities, I think it's on pages, uh, page two, well, page two. Uh, classrooms, cafeterias, media centers at the, you know, you get here for, uh, the elementary schools, middle schools.
Uh, the-
Are we comparable as far as our competition, in other words, nearby school districts?
Uh, yes, I, I did take a look at that too. Um, I'm just basing what I, uh, in that last sheet, that, um, the auditorium, the north gym, uh, the main gym and the football field are essentially the main facilities that I rent out throughout the school year, in a normal school year. Uh, the building classrooms, uh, I pretty much try and keep it more at one school site, rather than spread it out through all the school sites. Uh, being that, uh, Apache Junction is the furthest east, uh, it's either gonna be Cactus Canyon or the Apache Junction High School, uh, in terms of what gets rented out. But if we have, um, like a PTO or, not a PTO, um, like a, uh, housing agency looking to, uh, rent out Peralta Trails, we can certainly accommodate that too. But I have hardly rented out any other school site other than Cactus Canyon and the Apache Junction High School.
Okay, alright, good. I just wanna make sure that we're comparable. That we're, we're competitive with any of the, uh, with any of our nearby competition here.
Right, and, um, even though I didn't list that in the, the last sheet, um, I did take a look at what they charged for the school classrooms, the media centers, the, uh, libraries and everything, um, we are, uh, within the range of everybody else too.
Alright, good.
Ms. Conley, have any questions?
I don't.
Mr. Bowers? Ms. Garcia?
Zach, I just wanna say thank you for everything that you do.
Cool.
I know it's, goes unnoticed sometimes, but we really appreciate the work that you put into all this.
Well, thank you. I love Apache Junction, I'll call it home for the, until I'm retiring in like forty years, so.
Let's say like sixty years.
Yeah, we'll go with that. Any other questions?
Do we have any, um, upcoming rentals for the PAC?
Um, I have scheduled a rental with, uh, an organization inside the auditorium towards the end of September. Um, our season pretty much starts at, uh, the beginning of December for the auditorium and then carries out, uh, till the end of the school year. So, uh, basically every weekend, we have something planned in the auditor-
So that's good.
Yeah, uh, that's essentially what we were doing, uh, three years ago. We had, uh, events from middle of November all the way up to, uh, end of May, so we were generating some monies coming into the district.
Right. Now that's good, at least we can start doing those, I know.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay, anything else? No? You're doing a good job, Zach, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Zach.
Okay, item three point eight, Peralta Trail parking lot, Ms. Wallace.
Um, so we put this on the board agenda as a request from one of the board members who had some, um, social media contacts, so, Mr. Bowers, do you wanna kind of recap for everybody what happened?
Yeah, so, um, Peralta Trail uses or allows some of the community to use part of their parking lot. I, I, I think their homeowners association doesn't allow any street parking or anything like that. And, they had some issues, I believe it was during meet the teacher night, where they couldn't find the owners of those cars to move them, people couldn't find parking. So, I just thought we should bring it to the board to see if we can find kind of a resolution for that, maybe develop a system so that we can contact the owners, because I honestly don't have a problem with them using the parking lot. I just think there should be a system in place so something like that doesn't happen again, so.
So this was during school hours or function?
Yeah, it was right before school started.
Okay. So your concern is, when there's a function of some sort, it's taking a room?
Yeah, and they can't, they can't find owners to move the cars, and to my understanding, it's happened in the past before, so.
Do we have any signage up there, for people not to park in there? No? So, how, how would you like to move forward with this?
That's, I think that's what he's asking all of you.
Do you have any recommendations?
No, I talked to the principal today and she doesn't, she felt like it's not, hasn't been an issue that, um-
Well, maybe with the new cameras will help.
Yeah.
To see-
I think it's hard, because people park there, they don't tell anybody, I think it's like Mr. Batter said, it's that they're work trucks that can't be parked because the homeowners won't allow it in their neighborhood. And it may also be like when you have too many cars in your parking, in your area and you can't park on the street. But it is, I've been up there enough at night that it is the same, you know, it is the same people.
Like how many would you say?
I don't know, there's probably three to six work trucks, and there's one, you know, there's one SUV that's always there that I'm sure parks. So, I think it's just hard, because we don't have anybody to really
watch it.
Be out there to say, "Don't park here," you know, that kind of thing. She's, there have been a couple times where she has to have cars removed, but she calls the sheriff's department and they give her the contact information.
Oh, okay.
What do you think about maybe like, if we are having a big event, maybe just notifying the HOA to send out to the, I don't know if that would-
Yeah, I don't, I think the hard thing, just from the information that we were able to gather with talking to Mrs. Clement, is that they're probably not people working very happily with the HOA, because they're upset about the parking rules and they're trying to divert their vehicle somewhere. So I don't know that, um, I know she's, has been in contact with the HOA, but I don't always think that the HOA knows who it is- but I don't always think that the HOA knows who it is and that when she sends it out, I don't know that if people are, I mean, we could ask somebody to ticket them, but I'm not sure even with that if they would take the time to go do that, but we could do that. But I, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I think if they're parking there and we have school events going on and it's taking up space where parents can't get in there, I would just have them towed, no?
Have them, did you say towed? Okay.
I mean, I mean.
Are they parking in the parking lot?
Yeah, they park down towards the end, so they're not there during the school day, they're not there in the mornings. It's just that if there happens to be a, yeah, an event. And I don't know that there's, I don't, I can't speak from experience because I don't know that, how often the school events are or, you know, like there probably was a problem at meet the teacher night, I would guess. That was, I think that's about when that post was.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I personally want to avoid ticketing because I, I really don't mind letting them use it, it's not a huge deal. I just think if we just collected some simple information for them, that way if we do need them to move, we can contact them.
I mean, I, we can type something up and go put it on the windshield and hope that they give us the, you know, just say, we don't mind your parking here, but there are times where we need the parking lot. Can you give us the information so we don't have to ticket you or do something?
That's a good idea.
That's going to cost money, so we can type something up and I can go stick them on there at night just to see if that gets us anything.
Right.
Start that way, if that would work.
Some Mr. Revelans over there. Berta, we're going to get you over there. Okay, anything else on the parking lot?
He's trying to talk to you.
What? No. After, after the meeting. Anything else on the parking lot? No? Okay, thank you Bobby for bringing that. Um, item three point nine, S R two update, Ms. Wallace.
So this is, um, just what we've compiled in the grant that Mrs. Goff and I have been working on. So, um, we, there are, um, different pieces. There's the technology tools that are there, esports which have been, which was touched on a little bit to- tonight by Coach Hofer. Um, the school buses, so we put the seven that will be bought immediately when the money is released to us. And then those other seven we accounted for, but remember we're going to keep them probably in six months from now so that there's a cycle for replacing them. Um, what else is on here? The per, so there was, there was work done at the district office to allow for, um, more of an open space for when visitors are there with us. There's, there's also work being done on the sound system so that people who want to participate in the meetings but can't come to the meeting, there's better sound now so that they can actually hear that at home and not have trouble, um, following along with what's going on. We, our math curriculum was purchased through this. We had digital licenses that we've bought, um, across the district. There's been requests made on different things. So, um, there was, I know that, um, we, depending on how people were doing things in their classroom with students, there's been more digital curriculum purchased in those areas where we haven't purchased curriculum like in reading, math, um, in those areas. So I don't know if you have any questions about this one. We are going to plan a, I'm going to get with Mr. Bowers and Mrs. Kimball about the event that they, um, were a part of with a neighboring school district about the SRS three. And we'll do something online so that people can come in and be a part of that. We'll also do something in person, so people will have an option of whichever they're more comfortable to be able to give some recommendations and get some feedback before we start SRS three.
Any questions, Ms. Conley? Mr. Bowers?
Uh, just a quick question, so the additional seven buses will be coming out of SRS two then?
Yeah, so we, and we're able, because that, um, grant goes for consecutive years, we're able to budget in there, but then spend it when we need to spend it, but within that timeframe. So we can do that.
Alright, that was the only question I.
Those fourteen buses?
Yeah, so it's.
Are going to be all SRS two then?
Yes. And then nine HVAC units, I know that you asked for an update on those.
Do we, wait a minute, is that going to be on the, uh, wait a minute? Those nine HVAC units, do we have any idea of where they're located?
They're, uh, Mr. Hill is here, but if I remember correctly, and he will correct me if I am incorrect, those are being done on places right now that we know for sure SFB won't cover. So we're going to start with those because we know that SFB won't cover those. So those are where most of the students are not.
So where would they be?
District office, technology, um.
So usually the school's facilities only covers.
School facilities would only cover then classroom areas?
Well, anywhere that the students are, so like a school building, most of it is area that you can say the kids use, so that would be covered.
Like transportation.
Yeah, transportation, thank you. Food services maybe.
Technology building, things like that. District office. Mr. Hill, you want to give us the exact location for these?
Yeah, it'll be the district office, the IT building and, uh, football extension.
Okay.
So that one, because that works starting with SFB, so that'll get that area.
Okay.
It'll get that squared away.
Mm-hmm.
Um, oh, that's probably under the, under, my, the, I was going to ask about the other ones, but that's under the next, uh, topic.
SFB. Ms. Garcia, you have anything? No? I just want to first say that usually the SRS grant is not really board approval stuff, this is.
Correct.
Right, so you guys put together this and then you.
We just want to make sure that you are always informed of everything. But, um, ADE, Department of Education of Arizona, really regulates how that money can be spent. So they're, they kind of oversee that those are allowable expenses or not. So we, um, make sure that we're communicating with you about how we're going to use that money and make sure that we're listening to input from the board as well as from the departments and the sites. But it's allowable through ADE.
Okay.
On those fourteen buses, now we've got seven on order now, correct?
Not until the money's released to us.
Okay. And then we're planning on ordering additional seven, when did you say?
I say six months, but it really would be in, we would talk to the transportation department and see what they would recommend.
January. Well, because it takes six months for them to end up getting, right?
And it's just, the only thing we have to be, um, aware of is that replacement. When they come up for replacement, we don't want to have to replace all fourteen new buses at the same time.
Right.
But whatever they would recommend.
So with those fourteen plus with the five that we got, what, two years ago? That gives us nineteen new school buses. Which would replace basically all the buses on the nineteen routes that we've got going currently, correct? Okay, so then, oh, wait a minute, that goes into the other stuff, never mind.
Because I know we've approved SRS money, which we probably didn't need to, right?
Yeah, but we, I, we talked about that after we spoke with the state, it doesn't really have to be approved. But we want to make sure you and the community understand where that money's going before we send the grant off.
And we've got all this. Are we making this, are we making the community aware of where all this money is going?
Well, that's, uh, this conversation.
I think Mr. Concho means like PR department.
In other words, are we getting this information or not? Because the only thing I saw on any kind of, uh, media was we were getting seven new buses.
So Mr. Bordeaux and I have a meeting tomorrow morning, so, um, I, we'll definitely talk about how to get this out to the community so that they're aware.
Along with the HVAC units?
Yeah. But just so that people do understand it's there under board docs also. If they go into the, the website, they can, um, pull this up so that they would have this information themselves. But we'll work on getting it out another way also.
Alright, good, because I don't think everybody's got access to board docs.
It's public, so they can't get in the way you get in, but it's posted there publicly. So anybody that has access to the internet can get on.
Right.
Good, good.
So I just want to say that I had a conversation with Ms. Jackson yesterday and she was able to explain that we have installed twenty-five, uh, so far of the interactive smart boards. And so that, I'd like to get that out to the community through, I think it was K through second, correct? And so on here is this, this seems like there's going to be a lot more.
I think in total, there's going to be a hundred and fifty when she's done ordering. Hundred and twenty-five.
Hundred and twenty-five coming, so that's really exciting.
Okay, good, good.
Yeah, okay.
These are things that need to be pumped up and put out to the public.
And the, the, um, principals are working with her about who feels comfortable on each campus, like having them first, who's able, you know, like who's ready for one, feels ready. So they're working with her to create lists and stuff so that as soon as she's got them in place on her side, she can get them out.
Right, and getting the training in line and all that, good. I'm excited.
Good.
Okay, any other questions on SRS two? Anyone? Nope, good. Okay, moving on to item three ten, school facilities for update, um, Ms. Wallace.
So, um, this is our, the chart that Mr. Hill's been really great about keeping for us. The top of it is the oldest and the bottom is the most recent of projects. Um, so you can see kind of where we're at, where we're pending approval. He, there was one project that we just, what was the one we just talked about that didn't make it onto the sheet? The bleachers at Cactus Canyon. Is under review. Yeah, so that'll, we'll add that for the next one for September, but that one got put on after we had worked on this. So you'll see the column farthest to the right is what Apache Junction's responsible for. And the one next to that has been or, or is predetermining what is going to be spent through the SFB funds. So some of those are not, they're still pending approval, but there is a price tag on those even though the work has not been done yet.
I have a question on this status close, does that mean it's already been?
Correct, completed.
Completed, so we've got, oh, wait a minute, this is, what the heck? Roofing assessment.
Because remember there's like pieces to it, you know, that you have to go through those steps before you actually see a roof. But we're getting close, if you look down towards the bottom, there, you know, there's going to be, once it gets to weatherization, right, that's where you start to see the paint and the things happening. So you can see that those are coming up.
Pending approval, weatherization design, roofing design. And that weatherization includes, oh, that's the exterior paint.
Mm-hmm. And the ceiling.
Battleship gray still?
No, 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 we didn't, we didn't. We went with the, we, I have those in my office if you want to see them, I have a map in different colors. It's more desert landscape kind of colors with none of the green that you requested we avoid. So we took that green out.
Split pea green, I don't know how anybody can be in favor of that, but okay.
So I think you'll be happy with the colors.
It's just when you've ended up working in.
I know.
Prisons for years, it's like, really? Okay, so, okay, Fort Peaks, Fort Peaks, Peralta Trail, a high school, junior high.
So while he was looking, Heather, like on the cost and the cost share, like the roof design where it has the cost SFB and then the cost share for AJUSD, does that mean that there is no cost or?
No cost to us and school facilities board's picking up the whole tab on a, a whole lot of.
Yeah, they've picked up a lot.
That's good.
I just want to know, what is the length of time from the time it closed to the time it actually gets done?
Well, I thi, when we've been talking to the contractors, a lot of it right now is going to be based on supplies. So, you know, that's holding up projects, but, um, and these are big, like the high school's a big project, so I, I don't know that they've, have they given us a timeline really?
They, they were, the high school, whether they chose seventeen weeks.
Oh, that's not bad.
Seventeen weeks?
Yeah.
From when?
From when they start.
From when they start, when, do they know when they're going to start?
We're always beginning that construction through September, but, uh, might be October, or maybe December.
October, November, December.
It's a long process.
It is a long process. I have to also say though that the, um, people that have been working with us have been super helpful of just really coaching Larry at Mr. Hill, Edna and I kind of through the process and had a, you know, what to do to get things moving. So it's been very helpful to have people out there kind of cheering us along.
Well, and you have to have patience with us, like, I feel like we haven't really entertained this because it's such a long process.
Yeah, it is a long process.
People didn't want to deal with it, it's just easier not to do it.
Yeah.
So I thank you, Mr. Hill, for all you're doing, you're doing over and above. And.
Know what we ought to do.
Your boots on the ground though.
Let's take pictures before, during and after.
Right, for sure.
Just a thought.
So Mr. Concho was recommending that we do before, during and after pictures so that we have those.
That would be nice.
And we can put them on out on the newspaper, put them on out any and all media that we've got, telling them, hey, look, this is what we started out with, this is where we're at, this is what it's looking like. Finished product.
So the ones that say closed, have they actually, they're completed, is that correct?
We did, and we have been reimbursed.
And we have been reimbursed, okay.
Okay, so they're closed in some part of the.
So these first.
Project area, right?
Yeah, like, like the first step of the assessment.
Right.
You gotta go through all that, and then that's the assessment part, you're closed, then you start the, uh.
Then you start the actual work, right? Okay.
Many levels.
You mentioned, uh, something about the, um, the bleachers and the junior high. And what else was there at the junior high?
Locker room.
The locker rooms.
Right.
Yeah, I have a, a locker room, I have to do, for inspection on the locker.
Outstanding.
They won't cover it.
They won't cover it.
It's not an instructional area.
FIS Ed is not an instructional.
Well, you're not doing the instruction in the locker room.
It's health.
We're working on something.
SRS, we may build a classroom in the locker room.
Classroom in the locker room?
Put the hot, uh, class in there.
Really, okay.
We're, Mr. Hill is very creative.
Yeah, have to be creative, okay.
First aid class?
Right, there you go.
That is a possibility.
Yeah.
What about what the fire department should train, right? Do you have a training class in there?
Um,
This is exciting, there's a lot on her. This is exciting, there's a lot on her.
HVAC units. Those four hundred and ninety-five that date back to nineteen ninety-eight. And then you've got another, however many are over at Smes that date back to nineteen eighty-eight.
We have to have a deficiency for SFP to cover those?
All four hundred and ninety-some odd?
Mm-hmm.
They're old.
They're working.
But they're working, that's the problem.
They're working.
Okay, so in other words, until they start falling apart, we can't replace them?
Until they're absolutely broken and can't be replaced.
That's a lot of bubble gum and chicken wire.
And it's hard to have it broken through the process while you got trying to have kids in that classroom.
Right.
You have to keep maintaining.
And if it's a hundred dollar part, it's no problem, we'll go get it and fix it and get it, get it back up and going. But when it's a three thousand dollar compressor, sometimes we have to bite the bullet.
You know. I don't really call that preventive maintenance, but you sit there, bubble gum, chicken wire, it all falls apart, that's maddening.
But the thing is, is if we get to that point, maybe Mr. Hill like can make, you know, a decision with Mrs. Wallace and be like, okay, let's move these kids into a different room and then we can work on that. You know, that AC or what have you.
Yes, some campuses have room that we can move.
And then we can get that replaced and start kinda going down that direction if it's too much to repair.
Right. So now I know that there's been talk, government was supposed to fund new, like. Don't remember what it was about, but the circulate for the air because of COVID. So they were gonna, I don't know if they were gonna give more money, or was that part of the ESRS? But there's supposed to be something about new systems for HVAC or something where it's gonna recirculate the air to kinda help with. I don't know, the quality of air.
Okay.
Do you know anything about that?
There's, there's a few things out there, I have, I haven't looked into it a whole lot, but cuz I, I think some of them are probably a gimmick, but.
Okay.
There's uh deals you can put in your ductwork that's supposed to purify the air as it goes through.
Well, I'm just wondering if there was other funding out there for that specifically, because I know I heard about it, I just don't know. If there's a grant or if it's part of the ESRS money the state is giving us.
Yeah, I think we can do some of that.
You know, I know there's, they're talking about because of COVID, like how to get the air, like on the, you know, like on the airplanes, how it's more filtered or whatever.
Yeah.
I think that was part of what we were gonna look at ESRS three about, too.
Cuz we have stepped up another uh filter change during our school year.
Okay, so I didn't know if schools facilities would, because of that, would do that, you know?
I don't know.
Okay, well, maybe we can ask, Heather, maybe just save you to find out anything.
Well, and the thing about it is, i- if, if we have the money, if we have the funding in ESRS three to go ahead and go. Forward on this, it would seem to make sense to me that we get the old stuff replaced a little bit at a time. And maybe we even have to have a. A request or an RFP go on out. Cuz you're not going to end up changing out five hundred HVAC units in thirty days, I can tell you that much right now.
And we don't wanna do that, we wanna.
No.
You're gonna, you're gonna end up taking. Probably a couple of years for five hundred of them.
Okay, so I think we'd look into that, see if that's something that we can find out about. Anything else on school facilities?
I just have one question, so um I know there are like a handful of projects where we share the cost on that, can you like explain what determines that?
They call it excluded spaces. Some of it is if part of the school is built with bond money, they won't cover it. And it's gotta be educational. Instructional.
Right. And then I just wanna celebrate the fact that since two thousand and nineteen, we've had almost two million dollars awarded, it's really exciting.
That is exciting.
Yeah.
But there is another, a number on the other side we gotta.
Yeah.
We gotta find where that comes from. As we move forward, you know, I think Four Peaks is another one that's gonna cost us a little bit.
Right.
Uh, Four Peaks and the high school is mostly.
Okay.
What are we doing with regards to the uh? Okay, wait a minute, which school is that? It's not Four Peaks, the one that's got the cracks on the sidewalks.
Desert Vista.
That's Desert Vista.
Okay.
I know some of that is on the weatherization report. So we're hoping that when we go to design, they'll take care of that.
Through SFP.
Yeah, through SFP.
Good.
That'd be nice.
Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
You're welcome.
Okay.
You did a good job.
Yeah, good job. Item three-eleven, COVID update, Ms. Wallace?
So we sent out a letter on Friday night to the families, just updating them on. The different cases that we had through the week. I met today with the principals and they thought that was a good idea to keep doing on Friday so that parents have that. The um letters are getting pretty tedious and confusing for parents because. Just yesterday alone, we had twenty-four cases, so we had eight at the high school, three at Cactus, three at Desert Vista, seven at Four Peaks, and five at Peralta, so. It's consuming a lot of principal time getting those sent out. What we decided to do is, for a couple more days, they'll keep that same practice, but we're gonna create a form letter with a dashboard on it. For that school site, so what will happen is that letter will go out each night and say there were two cases in kindergarten or three cases in second grade. But then it can just be a total and then how many for that, that day, and so parents will have that information for the week. So we think that'll be less confusing for parents, we're trying to juggle both ends of it because. Some people are upset with us about continuing to send the letters, some people want the letters, so we're just trying to. Do by everybody, um, we just continue to encourage mask wearing and distance and. Keeping hands clean and away from their faces and touching things of other students and the, the biggest thing, and I think. The trouble we're having the most with is um students not be, staying home when they're sick, so they're coming to school. And they're sick or they've been in school and we're finding out that they've either are waiting on tests or been with people. That know they're positive, and I think that's the, those are the hardest things for parents at the school and for the administrators. So we just keep trying to remind people that it's really important. Um, but I do have to say there's a lot of support out there, there are a lot of families that are choosing to self-quarantine. When they know that there's been exposure and so. Everybody's doing um their part, I think it's hard just because. There's differencing of opinions and we're trying to stay neutral with everybody and do the best that we can for kids. And I think for the most part, parents are doing what they believe is best for kids and being. Fair to us at the same time, knowing what we're trying to juggle to, so it's not easy for anybody, but I think as a community. We're doing the best we can in a tough situation.
I was uh on, it was on uh the district email. You showed the numbers going on up. But, and I mean, I had COVID. Or China virus, or Wuhan virus, whatever you wanna call it. But it's not like it always lasts forever. And I'm anticipating that numbers will end up going down as time goes by because you have a drop-off, people get sick. They get well, and I think that needs to be shown as well.
Well, I can only show you what we can track, so that graph was just tracking cases since we've started school. And so, and like with the county, I didn't put all the stuff that the county has again because. People, you know, it's there for people to see, and so all we tried to do is just track the cases that we've had in the district right now. Cuz I don't, I'm not an epidemiologist, so I don't know when it's gonna drop off, I don't know how many are gonna get it before it drops off, so. We're just trying to be true to what parents are asking and showing since school started, where, where's that line going, and unfortunately. The line's on an uptick right now.
I understand it's on an uptick now, but like I just said, you're not always going to be sick. There's gonna come a point when approximately two weeks.
So then the graph will fall, yeah, so in two weeks when the graph falls, we'll put that, yeah, we'll show that.
I was gonna say, you'll end up needing to show the decrease as well.
I just can't project that, but as soon as it, as soon as it happens, yeah, as soon as it happens, we'll show that.
Ms. Conley, have any questions? Mr. Batters?
So what is our current substitute and overall staffing situation?
Um. It's a juggling act. It's, some days are better than others, um, some are out, I think one of the things that. We may come up against at some point is we've had teachers that have offered to stay online and teach from home. Um, knowing they're homesick if there's a classified or somebody in class with them, and we just. Haven't gone down that road yet because that opens up a whole new thing that I hadn't talked with any of you about, but that was something that came up this week. There was a teacher that offered to teach from home while she was quarantined. If somebody else could be with her class, but, so um it's just, they, honestly, it's a lot from about. Five o'clock in the morning till seven o'clock in the morning for, we have um text messages and chats where. The five principals and Mr. Cantrell and I are just trying to figure out what subs are available, who can go where, who, what teacher can get pulled this time to cover something else and. And they really work hard as five teammates to kinda make sure that we can cover the best we can.
Um, and then I just want to highlight how important communication is right now with staff, families, the community. Um, and that's why I'm thankful you sent out that email with all the case totals. Um, I just think that if we can put that in an email, we can put that on a website as well. Um, I just think if we do that, we need to be very clear that this information is provided, but it may, it, you know, it's give or take with the accuracy.
It's the information that, it's only as good as the information that we have.
So if we could like highlight that this is reported cases, there could be more for all we know.
Okay.
And then um I just have to, I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but I just have to reiterate that I do think we should be mandating masks. That is proven to stop transmission, my goal is to keep kids in class, in classrooms because we know that is where they learn best, that we know that. That is where they are safer in some situations, I know how devastating it would be to have a closure, and that is what is keeping me up at night. And that is why I am very adamant that we do need to mandate masks, so. That's all I had.
Anything else? Ms. Garcia?
Just keep, keep communicating with us, you know, on what, what we need to be doing and.
Okay.
As a board, we'll, you know, do what we can to, like Bobby said, keep kids in school and keep kids safe and.
Okay. Mr. Concho? You have anything you'd like to ask?
It's a very delicate situation. And regardless of which way you go, you're gonna end up getting flak.
No win. So I just wanna, let's see, you know, I wanna make sure that we are following the mitigation plans, we're doing the best that we can, which I know we are. Um, utilizing dividers, whatever is needed. Um, and just reinforcing those emails to parents, you know, of what, you know, keep your children home if they're sick. Please, you know, speak to your children if you want your child to wear a mask, make sure that you express your concerns and why you want them to wear a mask, a mask protects you. So like if I'm wearing a mask, it's protecting me, so if we wanna protect ourselves, then we wanna encourage people that feel that way to wear masks. If you're protecting yourself, then that's what you should be concerned with. Um, so for me, it's about just communication, just keep telling parents, please help us keep our schools open.
Yeah.
You know, talk to your children, you know, we talk to our staff daily, I'm sure, you know, how important it is that we continue to. Keep the wheels going, and so just those emails are important, I really think, and so it's tw- is the twenty-four cases all students? Or is that any adults?
The twenty-six right now are students.
They're all students, out of thirty-two hundred kids?
For this week.
Out of thirty-two hundred students, right?
Now, those aren't, those are only this week, those aren't, we don't count people that are quarantined or pre- previously positive. Because it's too hard to keep track of who is, who stayed home longer, whose sibling got sick and they're home now, but they're not, and so that's. We're just reporting current cases per week.
Right.
And that's who, who's testing?
Of, yes, yes.
Do you know how many districts have mandated them?
Masks, I, I don't have a number, I can tell you some off the top of my head, but not who has and who.
I know one district mandated until September, till the law.
Yeah, yeah.
And then after that, they're gonna lift it, so.
So the twenty-ninth of September, masks will be lifted again. Will, the funding will take place, is that, is that what we're looking at with that?
I don't, I don't feel comfortable saying because.
So can you just keep talking to our.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I will, and they're really good about letting us know, I can't imagine that. The tw- all I will say is the twenty-ninth won't come and go without something else coming out, one way or another.
Yeah, we just need to keep communicating and figure out what, what we need to do.
Yeah. Cuz I think that's gonna be a big turning point, no.
You said there was twenty-four students?
Twenty-six.
Okay, twenty-six students. Thirty-two hundred enrollment.
You have to remember that's, there's, there's people not testing, there's people not testing, so that's all we know.
So when a student comes to school and they're, they have symptoms or sick, what are we doing, what's the process?
We send them right to the nurse, and the nurse evaluates them if they have, the nurses are really good about working with the parents and. Trying to figure out if you do have allergies, they're not sending kids home with allergies, they're looking for multiple symptoms, fever for sure, you're going home.
Right.
Um, asking parents if they've been in contact with anybody that maybe have been positive, so there's a lot of communication going on. With parents and kids tell us a lot of stuff, you know, so that's the other piece, so. We've really tried to take that responsibility off the classroom teachers and let the nurses do it so that. It's not people just making get guesses, it's the nurse really evaluating, and then the nurse team. Really works closely together about what they're seeing and what's recent or what's, you know, there was a stomach flu that went around for a little bit or some kinda stomach bug, so. Kinda keeping aware of that and being able to try to figure out what was that and what could be something different.
Right.
So.
Okay. Anything else on COVID update? No? Good. Okay, just keep us in the loop, Ms. Wallace.
Okay.
Item three-point-two, first read on policy GCD, professional staff vacation and holidays, policy GDD. Support staff vacation and holidays, and policy GCCA, professional support staff sick leave, Ms. Wallace.
So um I'm not sure if you have some specific questions, but you can see in here for the GCD, one thing that was added. Was that an employee must become el- is only eligible for um payout after three consecutive years of service, and we. Made that change because we felt like they, after three years, there's been somewhat of a commitment to us and that. The payout at that time was more fair than just it being every year, and then with professional staff, there's a maximum of. And then with professional staff, there's a maximum of thirty days that can be paid out upon leaving employment. So, any questions on GCD?
Yeah. And I, I know we've had this conversation in prior board work sessions, so. Okay, so, GDD.
All those changes we had agreed on.
And then GDD, the same thing, uh, three consecutive years and a maximum of thirty days. So, that's for support staff vacation and holidays.
So, that three consecutive years, is that three consecutive years, and then you have to wait another three consecutive years?
No, it's just that if you left us year one or year two, you wouldn't get paid out. Anytime after year three, you would get paid out. Yeah. And the last one, GCCA, this is just that there, there's ten days of leave given um, to each staff member. And that, how they can accumulate that, and then that they're paid out at a rate of um, dependent on their hire date, what they're paid out.
So, some have been grandfathered in?
Yeah.
Right.
And again, we put in the three years here too, so, to be consistent.
Okay. And this is our first read, so this will come back for second read.
That's Ms. Goff's department.
Approval, second read and approval. Right. Does anybody have any questions on this? Ms. Conley?
No.
Mr. Batters?
Mm-mm.
Ms. Garcia? Mr. Concho?
Any more questions?
No questions. I would just um, have these sent to the attorney, just to make sure that the verbiage is all accurate.
I think we did that.
Did we do that?
But we can, I'll make sure.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we're doing everything correct. Okay. And I, I have no questions. I think we've covered this enough. Okay. All right, item three point one-three, first read, policy advisory, six eighty to seven eleven. Ms. Wallace, this was a lot.
Um, I think that the best way to go through this is just to answer any questions that you might have instead of policy by policy.
Ms. Conley, do you have any questions on these policies? No? Mr. Batters?
Mm-mm.
Ms. Garcia?
I had a few, but Heather answered them, so I'm good.
Okay. And we have until the next meeting before we have to approve them. So, if there is any questions, if you guys wanna still read through some of this stuff, you can ask. Um, Mr. Concho, do you have any questions?
No. No, we uh.
We kinda went over them.
I think I already had my questions answered on these things.
Okay. Ms. Wallace, is there anything you wanna add to this?
No, I think like, a couple that might just be ones that people would pick up on is, um, there's one BEDH, and that just says that um, people can't come in to solicit, um, can't address the board during a public time if there's, if they're selling something. Or they have a service that they want us to look at, that they have to go through proper channels at the district office to do that and not do that here. So, I think that's important that people know that, just because we've had some of that. And there was nothing wrong with it, but once, and if this is adopted, that would change.
Okay.
And so, they would just contact either, um, just either go to Mrs. Goff or the receptionist at the district office, and then they would direct it to the right person to kinda start that there.
Okay. So, if somebody comes in and wants to address the board with that, we will?
Then we would ju- if someone comes at night to do that, or during one of our board meetings, then either Mrs. Goff or I would address them and just let them know that the policy's been changed.
Okay.
And then let them know how they can kinda catch back up at the district office.
Okay. Alrighty, that was the only one I wanted to know about. All right, guys, we are almost done. Closing items, four point one adjournment. Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
We have a motion. Would somebody like to second?
Second.
Ms. Garcia, seconds. Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Batters?
Yes.
Mr. Concho?
Yes.
No, I mean, yes, that motion passes five to zero. Thank you, guys.